Yes, this is Willis Mackey. Uh, I'd like to call the meeting to order CPS Energy Board of Trustees meeting to be held on February 22nd, 2021 at 1:00 PM. At this time, I would like for Ms. Carolyn Shelman to confirm the quorum.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Mr. Steen, are you present?
Yes, present.
Ms. Gonzalez? Ms. Gonzalez, are you on the line? Mr. Kelly?
Present.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Here.
Dr. Mackey?
Present.
So, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Michelle.
Uh, just for the record, this is Janie Gonzalez, trustee.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Um, we have a quorum with all board members present. Uh, at this time, uh, I would like to turn the meeting over to Taylor.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. Good afternoon. My name is Taylor. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees, thank you for joining. It's February 22nd, regular board meeting by teleconference. For this meeting, there were two registration periods, Friday, February 19th, from 7:00 AM until 1:00 PM, and then today, Monday, February 22nd, from 10:00 AM until 11:00 AM. Please note that if you did not register during either of those periods or did not provide the required information, then you are not registered to speak today. If your name is not on the registration list, you will not be unmuted to speak during this meeting, even if you press zero on your phone keypad. Thus, if you did not preregister, please do not press zero, as preregistration was required. If you successfully preregistered to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please press zero on your phone keypad now to be put in the queue to speak. A member of our staff will take your name. When you hear me say your name, your line will open, and you will have two minutes to speak. You will hear a chime sound to indicate that you have 10 seconds remaining to speak. Again, if you successfully preregistered to speak, please press zero on your phone keypad right now to be put in the queue to speak. And as a reminder, for all who speak during this meeting, please remember to identify yourselves before speaking. Further, please remain civil and professional while providing your input. If vulgar or inappropriate language is used, the speaker will be muted and forfeit their opportunity to provide any further input during the public comment portion of today's meeting. Please know that the CPS Energy Board of Trustees will provide another opportunity for you to register to speak during an upcoming meeting to be held in the near future. As soon as the date of the meeting is confirmed, it will be published to the public through various communication outlets. And also, please be assured that your input and thoughts are important to management, all employees of CPS Energy, and the Board of Trustees. The Board thanks you for your participation today, and always, and is interested in hearing public comments. And with that, I will now turn the meeting over to Chair Dr. Mackey.
Uh, thank you, Taylor. At this time, we'll have our safety message, and that will be done by the mayor, and the second one will be Ms. Gold Williams, our CEO.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, thank you very much. I'll give a brief update on the COVID situation. Uh, here in San Antonio, uh, we continue the battle against the COVID-19 virus, which now has unfortunately variants within our community. Um, we have been battling, um, some degree of disruption with regard to data sharing from the state as a result of the winter event. So, the data that I'm going to share with you is somewhat incomplete with regard to case numbers, uh, that we were missing. However, we are now at over 190,000 cases cumulative since the pandemic began. Uh, thankfully, though, our caseload has begun to drop. Um, as you know, for the last several weeks, our positivity rate has declined, um, as vaccinations have been, uh, begun to minister here in San Antonio, um, as well as the hospitalization rate begun to decline. Uh, the most reliable indicator of where we are relative to where we were about a month ago is in our hospital data, and we can confidently say we do have complete data now from our hospital system. And for the first time for, in quite a while, uh, since early December, we're now below 600 people total census in the hospital with COVID-19. Uh, in addition to that, the metric that the state uses to determine the percentage of COVID-19 in our hospitals has declined below 15% uh, for more than a week now. Uh, so as you may have seen, due to, based on the state's orders, restaurants and bars and other businesses that were previously restricted are now back up to 75% occupancy. Uh, with regard to vaccines, uh, the community continues to do well distributing them. Uh, however, we are quite limited, uh, with regard to the number of vaccines we have available into our community, and we've been making our voices heard very loudly with our federal and state partners. That San Antonio has unfortunately the highest social vulnerability index and the highest mortality rate in cases in major cities in Texas, and we should be locating a FEMA super site here to get more vaccine distributed in our community. Uh, those talks are still outstanding, uh, but we have had some degree of, um, traction with our state partners as of late, so we'll continue to look for ways to increase the number of vaccines that are available in our community. Um, so our fight continues. I want to thank everyone who's continued to cooperate with health protocols, with masking up, uh, and physical distancing. The importance of those remain. Uh, we don't expect to get close to herd immunity, um, for another several months at the earliest, so those protocols remain very important. Lastly, I will say, uh, then in the midst of everything else that we've been facing as a community, we also are in a serious blood emergency, so we've been making, uh, calls, uh, for folks who are able to, to make a donation of blood, to go to SouthTexasBlood.org, or you can schedule an appointment through University Health. All types of blood are short, and we rely on those for surgeries, pregnancies, trauma care, et cetera. But, um, type O blood in particular is at a critical shortage, so please do schedule an appointment if you can. Lastly, I will say that, uh, this community continues to step up for our neighbors in need. Just, uh, a few hours ago, Gordon Hartman and others announced, uh, a relief fund called Let's Help SA Fund, uh, which is going to be targeting relief to Haven for Hope, Sam Ministries, and the San Antonio Food Bank. Uh, we ask for donations, uh, for those efforts, as we've also established a community pipe repair fund to help accelerate repairs of frozen and damaged piping in people's homes, uh, that may or may not be reached by FEMA reimbursement. So, there's a lot of efforts underway to help our neighbors in need. Uh, again, want to thank everyone for their diligence in protecting one another and also helping us get back on our feet. So, uh, with that, I'll turn it back over to Chair Mackey and to CEO Paula Gold Williams. Thank you.
Mayor, for your update, and thank you for your leadership. At this time, the CEO, Paula Gold Williams?
Yes, uh, thank you so much, um, Chair Dr. Mackey, Mayor, and all of our board members, as well as all of the stakeholders who have, um, made time for listening or participating in our meeting today. And thank you so much for the continued focus on safety and COVID update. Mayor, uh, Nuremberg, and as well as our county judge, continued through this difficult week that we just had to provide many updates associated with COVID, because that was the first big unprecedented impact that we had, that we've been dealing with for almost a year now. So, our team was very much paying attention to the advice, the continued advice and focus that the mayor provided, even though, as he reported today, there were difficulties across the state to even keep the communication systems up last week. Um, I will start out with just a bit of a status as usual about the direct impacts of COVID on our workforce, but I will also talk about the implications of, uh, the COVID management and the challenges that we went through and the whole community went through last week. Um, I will keep my, um, comments short about the details about the outage. When I do get to my part of my presentation, uh, after the public comment, I will address some of the items in more detail. I do want to highlight that, um, I am very pleased and appreciate that the chair and the, and the board is considering a potential special meeting to happen before the next month's meeting, so we can also provide more information to the community as we move forward. So, I will start with the focus of what the COVID stats look like for CPS Energy. Um, basically, we are not seeing the same, uh, issues that we had. I mean, we've seen some of the pressure come off from the holidays. Uh, after the holidays, just like the city saw some peak, we saw some very high numbers approaching 10% of our workforce was quarantined. We're down out of the high 300 level of quarantines, and we're down below 200 today. Uh, in total, since inception of, uh, the pandemic, we have accumulated up to 450, uh, total cases across our 3,100 employees. Some of those cases are, um, uh, you know, basically cleaned up, and there's not a lot of repetition in there, but, but we have continued to tally how much we've been impacted by actual positive cases. We do currently have one employee in the hospital, and our total hospitalizations that we've had since inception have been 17. And, um, of all the cases that we had, many people have been cleared and been able to return to work, uh, which was good in terms of seeing those stats come down as we were entering a very difficult and terrible period in San Antonio's and the state's history, uh, brought on by an extended period of freezing cold, sub-freezing cold temperatures across the state. Um, it was very difficult, uh, on our customers, and we are absolutely, I personally and the rest of the team, are very, um, sorry for the implications that people had to deal with based upon the weather. And we are continuing to work towards providing the best recovery forward, um, that we can. We have no one left who has had an outage from the beginning of the, the initial weather event. We did have a hard time coming out of the outage, because if things were getting better in the system, we actually experienced a kind of a blizzard here in San Antonio. But from that standpoint, again, our employees, uh, powered through that experience and continue to work. We, we had all of our employees queued up and ready to go to, to basically restore power wherever they could. Because we were doing mass outage management, some of the fuses, or quite a few of the fuses across the system were, um, were actually, um, failing, and then there were equipment failures. That said, our people were poised and ready to go to be with medicine, so they did go out and place, uh, the fuses where they could and the field equipment, but they really couldn't gain, uh, momentum until we came out of the outage, um, in the Thursday timeframe. There were a lot of activities that people had to do to try to bring the last few groups on. We went down from over 300,000 outages, down to 200. Then when the outage management requirement got lifted, at that point, we got down to less than 10,000. And within a day, uh, 24 to 48 hours, we got everyone primarily restored, except that they had a severe equipment issue or a power line that was down. Um, we did have, again, a lot of people experiencing multiple days of being out in frigid temperatures, and for that, we are very sorry. We had many employees too, though, experiencing outages of power for multiple days and water challenges for their family. They did, again, brave the cold temperatures. Our, our employees in the field, um, those that are also supported by our unions, IDW and NAEP, and just all our frontline employees in the field, keeping the fleet up, keeping the warehouses going, um, making sure that our communication systems were, were at best, functioning the best they could in these, in these predicaments. We did have people working around the clock, still practicing the COVID protocols. I did get a question about why we didn't create a central command system, uh, center for the pandemic, excuse me, for the weather event, and that is really because we continue to maintain the COVID protocols that we had. We did have an emergency operating center that was the core of looking at all the outages and all the problems across the system, and was helping basically take the instructions from ERCOT that we were getting and deploying resources all across the city. We had to make sure that they stayed with a stable group of employees, so management did not, executive management did not show up at that control center. The one thing that we have because of COVID, we are much better in the virtual environment than we would have been over a year ago, and we were able to keep constant contact with each other 24/7/365. We did have a water failure at our main control center. The water went out from, from that location, and for days, they had porta potties in, in there, again, realizing that they were working around the clock, sleeping there, making sure that we were still monitoring the systems going forward and maintaining the proper COVID protocols to keep the system going. I know by far this was one of the most difficult experiences that anybody has seen. We thought COVID was tough. COVID compounded by this outage was just an insurmountable, terrible experience overall. The focus that CPS had and many other communities across the state had, as tough as it was, it was all about trying to keep the grid from crashing. I would tell you honestly, if we didn't get to where we ultimately did and worked together with conservation and improving our communication through that event as a, as a city, as a community, as a state, we wouldn't have power today. And, um, and we by far will do all we can to improve and learn from these experiences that we had this past week, and we are already working based upon the board's, um, continued focus, and they have been focused in watching this event and guiding us through this effort all the way through. They by far are, are very much driven to ensure that we are going to be producing improvements going forward to make sure that we can help this not happen again. There are many, many things that we have to do as a community. We have to stay diligent relative to COVID and all the protocols. We're not out of the woods from that standpoint, and we are going to stay diligent in terms of looking for new solutions to keep the reliability up and improved going forward. We have a new issue, uh, at hand, the cost to keep the power flowing as much as it did, even though it had issues with exorbitant. We currently are taking all those costs, accumulating them, validating them, and holding them, because we are not going to be pushing exorbitant bills through our system to our customers. Our customers have already been through a lot. Now, what we are doing is assessing that we're going to go after every avenue possible, state and federal funds, negotiation, talking to the vendors that we had to pay for the fuel, to see what we can do, and then partnering with associations. We also do have financial tools, quite a few, because San Antonio is a strong, strong energy market, and we have quite a few financial tools that we will continue to deploy to see what we can do in terms of finding the best affordable solution going forward. Again, as we continue to do all we can to support vaccinations, the programs that need to happen to truly get our community back on track. We are out of the outage management issues. Uh, today is a beautiful day, but I do understand that people are still angry, and there are many, many questions to continue to answer. We will answer them. I continue to provide daily, um, updates during the weekend, and Saturdays if necessary. We will continue to provide information and answers to the community, and we will continue to do better all, every day, thinking about what we can do to provide additional solutions in the short, medium, and long term. So, uh, the last thing I'll say, just related, we have many people, uh, have things that they have to worry about, keeping their families going, figuring out what to do, how to recover, how to get damage done at their homes, uh, you know, because of the freezing temperatures taken care of. The one thing you don't have to worry about right now is any disconnection and any exorbitant bills coming through your way. If anything does happen, that said, we are here to help. Our wonderful energy advisors continue to, to take the phone calls, so you don't need to call right now, because you're not going to get a bill, but if you do want to call and ask a question, we're here for you, and we will continue to be here through this crisis. This crisis of trying to figure out how to be better, this crisis in terms of the pandemic, please know that our 3,100 employees are people-first champions. They bring their expertise and their passion. Many of them, like me, have been born and raised in this community, and it has hurt us to see what has happened, and we will vigilantly work 24/7/365 to continue to do better for San Antonio. We love this community. Thank you so much, um, Chair Dr. Mackey. I will return it over to you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Gold Williams.
Uh, Dr. Mackey, this is John Steen. I have a question for Ms. Gold Williams.
Sure.
Um, of course, this is, you know, you were talking under the safety message. Uh, I, I, I know from a news report that we had, uh, a crew that was out, and their vehicle, um, slid off the freeway, and, um, was anybody hurt in that, and did we have any other incidents? Of course, it goes without saying, we're so grateful for all the men and women that were out there, while, while, while so many of us were, were sheltered in. They were out, uh, trying to deal with all the many problems that were springing up. But could you tell us about that, about that vehicle accident?
Yes, sir. That was, I will say first and foremost, that employee is recovering and, um, and, and really was, uh, we were very, very fortunate. Uh, we had a, an employee who was driving to do a restoration and hit black ice. That's the other thing that we dealt with as we were trying to come out of this. When the snow came, there was black ice all underneath, um, the highways and roads, and so we had an employee hit the black ice and slip a bucket truck. And luckily, um, he was, uh, in his, uh, seatbelt, and, um, we were able to, to get him to the hospital to be looked at. I will say that as one of his leaders, his manager, was coming to, uh, his, his aide to, to provide, um, assistance initially, unfortunately, his manager was side swiped. Uh, he too ultimately was okay, but I think that those are, um, just examples of how treacherous it really was and how careful people had to be relative to the, the multiple, um, members of our team who were working around the clock. They did find themselves, because of the icy parts of the road, having to shelter in their car, uh, and to, to try to stay safe, and some could not, even though their shifts were over. We have to be careful that they don't work beyond, uh, complete fatigue. They're out there working in these sub-freezing temperatures. Um, we have to get them home and rested, but we did have employees that had to, um, shelter in place and sleep in chairs and, and just kind of waded out from that standpoint. Um, trustee Steen, that is a great question to ask. I mean, there were people, it was a really treacherous situation. We are fortunate that, um, that, you know, in those cases, people survived and are doing well, and, uh, and again, they just, we just, you know, kept going. So, you will hear a little bit of a presentation even about, we, we backed up our team with, um, with very solid contractors. Our people were out on the front line constantly through it. We survived, uh, through it, and, and people went right back out throughout the weekend and, and kept the, the restoration efforts going.
Well, thank you for that, uh, answer there, uh, Ms. Gold Williams. At this time, uh, and, and thank all our employees for doing an outstanding job and going out in, in that cold and ice and, and, uh, doing the best that they can to provide energy, uh, for the city of San Antonio. Uh, at this time, I would like to turn the, um, invocation over to Dana Myers, who will be doing our invocation.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come before you today and give you honor and praise. We are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Please provide us with the grace to serve all people well. Lord, we thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing important responsibilities. Provide us all with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as we navigate the many challenges before us. We pray that you guide our thoughts and that our words and actions today will bring honor to you. Help us all to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting, though it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Lastly, please lay your hand of blessing on today's meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting back over to, uh, Taylor for public comments.
Thank you. Yes, the next agenda item is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. So, if you have successfully preregistered to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please press zero on your phone keypad now to be put in the queue to speak. A member of our staff will take your name, and when you hear me say your name, your line will open, and you will have two minutes to speak. You will hear a chime sound to indicate that you have 10 seconds remaining to speak. Again, if you have successfully preregistered to speak, please press zero on your phone keypad now to be put in the queue. And as a reminder for all who speak during this meeting, please remember to identify yourselves before speaking. Further, please remain civil and professional while providing your input. If vulgar or inappropriate language is used, the speaker will be muted and forfeit their opportunity to provide any further input during the public comment portion of today's meeting. So, again, if you are a preregistered speaker and have not already done so, please press zero on your phone keypad now so you can be put in the queue to speak. So, once again, here is how the process will work. We will invite preregistered speakers to speak in the order in which they register. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the agenda item number they are going to speak about. And for this meeting, we do have 108 registered speakers who will each have two minutes to speak. Speakers will hear a chime sound when 10 seconds remain, reminding them to wrap up their comments. And our first speaker is Alex Burnell, followed by Jorge Granados.
My name is Alex Burnell. I'm the advocacy manager at Move Texas. I've been giving comments at these board meetings with semi-regularity since the board added public comments. I was also part of the climate organizing community that pushed for this small introduction of democracy into our municipal utility, which we own and pay bills to. This addition to the process is going to display its virtue today, as taxpayers talk about what they, family, and friends endured during the climate crisis-induced polar vortex that sent our grid, uh, into system-wide failure and millions into the cold and dark without water and without certainty. Because of this lack of certainty, I want to be certain in my comments and make two simple points. The first is about the moral imperative to do everything we can to scale back a shared disaster that comes with climate destabilization. We burn coal and heat the planet. If we continue to do this, we will, we will be here again every time, more solemn and angry at suffering we don't yet know, but it's certain if we don't change. Close our largest emitter of heat chop and gas, this loose coal plant. Don't point fingers in an interconnected system of climate denialism and behave as a pillar of support through a mutual standstill and blame game. ERCOT and the PUC and every utility in the state is responsible, because all of them have insufficiently internalized the climate crisis until now. Anybody who steps up at this moment helps to change that paradigm. This is about the zeitgeist as much as it is about jurisdiction and institutional authority. Second, debt on top of debt on top of debt on top of debt. Debt for the coal plant, a potentially stranded asset whose debt servicing is recast as a victim cost of transition to renewables. That's socializing the cost of bad choices and passing the responsibility on to some of the poorest and precarious people in the country. During this outage, don't make the hand of budgets in the red reaching to our pockets. Find another means. Debt should not be leveraged against or and with the planet demands that we do. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Jorge Granados, followed by Amador Salazar.
My name is Jorge Granados. As a concerned citizen of the south side of San Antonio...
and the south side of San Antonio, the events of last week were a travesty. It was outrageous that the fact that there was no effort to communicate with the residents of the city, no effort to restore power in a timely manner. And what was most, what was peak negligence was the simple fact that no input was provided to the community. There was no communication. My entire neighborhood was left without power for nearly two days. And when I saw on the outage map, it looked as if quadrant three and quadrant four were the most heavily affected. If CPS Energy is not going to equitably distribute power in times of crisis, there's a serious problem with the institution. And it's my sincere hope that this Board of Trustees looks into that matter and actually makes reforms necessary to ensure that we don't have a crisis like this ever again. Now, don't get me wrong, ERCOT deserves plenty of blame for what happened, but CPS Energy is the one who implemented these outages. And it's my hope that this does not happen in the future. Thank you, and that is all.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Almador Salazar, followed by Mason Eskamia.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Almador Salazar. I am a resident in D1 of San Antonio and I'm a member of San Antonio DSA. Please follow us on social media and join DSA. I'm here to echo the demands of our organization. One, first off, no power, no bill. Working people in residents of San Antonio should not pay one cent of the cost of power during the storm. Whatever costs were incurred should not be passed on to regular working people when many of them did not have power during the freeze. CPS Energy should demand ERCOT, state of Texas, or I don't know, foot the bill to Jerry Jones. We got to think of creative ways to wipe whatever debts resulted from this, is what I'm saying. San Antonio residents are not responsible for a shoddy grid and an over-reliance on dirty deregulated energy practices that emphasizes profit over reliability. Two, we must end our dependence on fossil fuels. Natural gas and coal has proven its ineffectiveness in keeping our power going. We need to close the spruce coal plant by 2030. Quit poisoning people of color with an inefficient energy source. We need to expand our green energy sources. We need a Green New Deal for Texas. I know Abbott attacked that, but that's because it would hurt the bottom line of his friends. Three, increase and prioritize weatherization programs. If we want to make sure people survive during violent winter storms, like the ones we experienced last week, we need weatherization emphasized for all San Antonians. CPS Energy is a public utility. Serve the public, serve the people. Four, finally, the only way to ensure that our public utility is accountable to the people is to make city council the governing board of CPS, not the Board of Trustees. No hard feelings, y'all, but we must dissolve the board as currently constructed. Four of the five Board of Trustees are not accountable to anyone. They are not elected, save for the mayor. So thanks, Mayor Nuremberg, I appreciate that. If the mayor, you know, screws up, there will be an election. If the public determines he isn't serving the city adequately, we can elect someone else. We need that for the entirety of our utilities board. And the best way to do that is to democratize our energy utility. Also, if you happen to be in D2 or D5, please vote for our DSA endorsed candidates, Terry Castillo and Jalen Miquito Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Mason Eskamia, followed by Vincent Rodriguez. And again, if you haven't already pressed zero, if you are a registered speaker, you may do so now. So again, you can press zero to get in line here with your public comment if you are pre-registered. Mason Eskamia, followed by Vincent Rodriguez. Mason? Mason Eskamia? Our next speaker will then be Vincent Rodriguez, followed by Ryan Gordon. Vincent Rodriguez? Our next speaker will then be Ryan Gordon, followed by Sam Woody. And again, if you haven't pressed zero to get in line, if you're pre-registered, go ahead and do so now. Ryan Gordon? Ryan Gordon? Moving on to our next speaker, Sam Woody, followed by Lisa Wolverton. Sam Woody? Sam Woody? Our next speaker is Lisa Wolverton, followed by Juanita Watson.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Lisa Wolverton from San Antonio. Thanks for letting us speak. My question is in relation to some comments that Ms. Gold Williams mentioned earlier about going after every avenue possible to find funds and that the plan is to deploy any financial tool that can be deployed. So my question is, what about this $13 million that was slated to be paid out in May of 2020 for at-risk incentives? What happened to that money? Where did it go? The press release that I read that CPS put together indicated that it was important to preserve cash. So I interpret that as there's $13 million lying somewhere that hopefully can be put towards this cost. And secondly, what about incentive money that was slated to be paid out in 2021? If last year the payout was coming in May of 2020, that tells me that the incentive payout for this year is coming in a couple of months. So assuming that money has been building up for that, I'd like to know where that money is and if it can be applied to knocking down this exorbitant cost. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Juanita Watson, followed by Marlin Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Juanita Watson. A CPS report from October 26, 2020 states, "We listen to our customers to avoid risk." Apparently, you haven't, but you should start. Ms. Williams has recently used the term unprecedented in describing this occurrence. But I don't necessarily think this was an unprecedented event. San Antonio received 13.5 inches of snow in January of '85 and there are other winter events such as '89, 2011, and 2018. Some of these incidents resulted in rolling blackouts and others became dangerously close. In fact, CPS Energy applied and was approved for a $500 million improvement and expansion fee increase that was passed to the consumer in 2011. It was meant to handle these types of situations and unexpected power demands. During the most recent event, one-third of CPS customers in San Antonio had their power cut off in the middle of the night without warning. Instead of rolling 45 minutes on and 15 minutes off, that has been mentioned, we were without power for 20 hours continuously. When it did come back on, we had short spurts of two to three minutes on to six to seven hours off. The complete cutoff did not occur because of an act of God or an accident, but because of an executive decision that was made in the middle of the night without warning to cut everyone on this grid off. We were deemed expendable, but I can assure you, we are not. To make matters worse, the rolling blackouts were not equitable and it's left many with catastrophic property damages. The trust has been eroded between CPS and most of all of your customers. The devastation came from ignoring years of data not to winterize your power plants properly. And the fallout is what we just witnessed. Your six pillars, reliability, customer affordability, safety, security, environmental responsibility, and resiliency? What are you standing for?
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Marlin Davis, followed by David Burleson.
Marlin Davis, D2 and San Antonio DSA. CPS Energy failed us. More than 370,000 San Antonians lost power. Our water systems were compromised and the resulting instability left hospitals fighting a pandemic underfed and overstressed. Firefighters unable to stop the Cortland View apartments from burning down and residents frozen in abandonment. San Antonians will never really be able to calculate the damage done in this moment, but CPS has the audacity to believe it can and intends to charge us for it over the next 10 years. But you failed us and you don't get to keep a job you didn't do. If a 10-year spread of costs was the plan, then you should have winterized our infrastructure 10 years ago during the last winter blackout. I guess this isn't the first time you've left us in the dark after all. You did not implement CAPS despite policy adaptation into the 2019. You reappointed John Stein after he helped prepare a legal brief that argued, and I quote, "The operation of utilities was largely insulated from public whim, proving this is not a public institution, just an investment for bondholders and on the heels of failing the public you pretend to serve. You denied access to web portals that would allow struggling customers to cancel auto-pay while filing to suspend the release of information to the public this past week." This is what disaster capitalism looks like. When San Antonio residents see the price of their bills, they should recognize the cheap cost of this board's integrity, an institution that will sell out the public to protect the profits of the few. I demand that CPS submit to an audit, end our dependence on coal, and adopt renewable energies. We should also waive bills for the duration of the storm and extend the moratorium on disconnections. Paula Gold Williams has said herself that we should expect this type of weather to happen more often, but I believe more than just the grid is an update. Paula should resign and the entire Board of Trustees should be disbanded in favor of city council gaining direct control of utilities. And as for your futures, maybe you can use the profits of all your price gouging to buy a one-way ticket to Cancun.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is David Burleson, followed by Paul Wise.
Hi there. Am I audible?
Yes, go ahead.
Perfect. Hi, so my name is David Burleson. I'm a CPS Energy residential customer that was impacted by last week's outages. So fuel adjustment charges per CPS statements and live streams in the last week, we were informed that they roll into bills sort of 45 to 60 days in arrears. So customers, we need, as a customer, we need clear access to this calculation and what rates they are currently exposed to. So currently, in the MyEnergy portal, it does not contain any of this price information. And during last week's storm, it was also down, so we couldn't even see our own consumption. Going forward, it is critical for consumers to make consumption decisions with these prices in mind. Fuel adjustment charge calculations should be visible in near-real time so that consumers can know when to reduce consumption if they do not want to be exposed to those current high prices. I have provided a handout. It is not appropriate for customers to be subject to market prices without visibility to them, only to find out 45 to 60 days later what they actually paid. Prior to this event, there was little visibility that the market prices were being passed to the consumer via these fuel adjustment charges, nor was it possible to tie these fuel adjustment charges to reality. For example, if I tried to back calculate my bill's fuel adjustment charge, it's very difficult to tie that to anything publicly available. So thank you for consideration to make MyEnergy portal a place to view near-real-time consumption with running average of the fuel adjustment charge. This will just make consumers more powerful and that they'll know their information in real time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. Next speaker, we have Paul Wise, and then followed by Mia Martinez.
Hello, my name is Paul Wise. Thank you for hearing me today. I have to admit that I'm incredibly nervous as I do this. It's my first time making a public comment in a space like this and I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity and the people who have fought for local democracy in the past so that these sorts of venues can be available to all people. I'm incredibly happy to hear all the names that don't sound like just generic white folk speaking. How amazing. And they are saying things that everyone in this room needs to hear. I'm also nervous because I'm not going to be as eloquent. With that in mind, I'm given power by that knowing that the majority of customers here in the San Antonio area are not going to be amazingly eloquent speakers, nor are they going to be the most educated. But that is not the point. The point is they know they're being screwed over by CPS and in some degree, the city of San Antonio. When this happened, it was part of a greater movement that left millions without power. Why? Why was that ever allowed to happen? I cannot understand it. Maybe some people were imagining a family huddled together for warmth, doing their best. But what about the people who are absolutely alone, the elderly? What about all of the veterans who are sitting without nothing? The stories are already beginning to roll in of people owing so much money. Why? Why was the system ever created that would allow this to happen? And then the audacity for such a meeting like this to be opened with prayer. While I am certainly thankful for people of faith who contributed much to the city's well-being during the disaster, I can only imagine that it is heard a bit deathly. What we need is to waive the bills for the duration of the storm. We need to end our dependence on fossil fuels, strengthen energy efficiency and conservation programs, and again, increase public accountability with energy democracy, not without it. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Mia Martinez, followed by Stanley Gillisby. And again, just another reminder, if you haven't pressed zero, if you pre-registered for public comment, you can still do so now. Just go ahead and press zero.
Hi, my name is Mia Martinez. I'm calling on behalf of a citizen within the Copano Bay area. If CPS was on our side, why wasn't there better transparency? My whole neighborhood was informed that we were going to have rolling blackouts. Was two minutes rolling blackout? That felt nothing of electricity that I was informed of. Also, with half better communication, I was given a call on Tuesday saying that my electricity was going to be your source. I was freezing in the night. My neighbors were freezing. We didn't have power back until days later. That is not transparency. We felt lied to. You even saw the signs of global warming where there was upcoming snow. That should have been your first sign to have reinvent and improve the system of the grid that was supposed to provide us warmth and so-called rolling blackouts to give us enough energy and electricity to protect us from this winter storm. CPS, and how dare you charge us for an amount that we have no control over that we were trying to survive here? Please improve your system. Our neighbors could have died. We lost amount of people. Why won't you fix the system? Protect us next time. Reinvent it. Do a better job if you are on our side. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Stanley Gillisby, followed by Isabella Brizeno. Stanley Gillisby? Our next speaker will then be Isabella Brizeno, followed by Ash Miller.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board. I'm Isabella Brizeno, a San Antonio resident and organizer of Texas Rising and someone who was very lucky for living close to a hospital. Unlike many CPS customers, I pet my power last week. Enough power to have a charged phone and receive story after story of San Antonians, their families, and their pets suffering in the cold, sometimes without even water. Or with water, but not any that was safe to drink because they didn't even have power to boil it. I was also able to read a heinous CPS tweet which pretended that spreading the cost of this lax improper governance over the course of the next decade is a viable or humane solution. Why should people who didn't even have power for days continue to pay for your mistakes and the mistakes of many others? Why should those who had power and were only trying to keep warm pay this price? Maybe the business community members regularly commissioned to speak against public interest at these meetings- interest at these meetings should be pulling their money together. Maybe Paula Gold Williams can spare some of her ridiculous salary. Reliable renewable energy could have saved us. And if you still do not commit to replacing spruce with a clean renewable energy source by 2030, you're telling your customers that you don't care. How many of us freezer go hungry? Similarly, if you do not take this as a large flashing sign to commit to an audit and make changes, you are a joke. Not only do thousands of people already call for you to be reformed, there are now likely hundreds of new people you pissed off. Truly relieve customers of their bill rather than spreading it out and commit to a change in energy generation and in energy management style. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker will be Ash Miller, followed by Karen Munoz.
Hello, I am Ash Miller. I use say them pronouns and I live in San Antonio, Texas. Firstly, I want to thank our mutual aid, our local free pantries and bridges for helping out our community. I want to thank our local transgender community for helping out one another, sharing resources and checking in. Oftentimes, it is only us who will look after each other. Next, I want to echo the sentiment of equitable distribution of power to our economically segregated city. I want to echo the sentiment of erasing any and all debt. And I want to echo the sentiment of ending our dependence on fossil fuels. And also want to echo the sentiment of a democratically elected board. And I also want to echo the sentiment of transparency for our customers. I also want to bring up that I formerly lived in the coastal bend of Texas where Hurricane Harvey hit. The hurricane, the eye of the hurricane went right through my hometown. I know what it is like to live through a natural crisis due to climate change. The only difference here is that this was preventable. And we need to work to where it can be preventable in the future through the things that not only I have mentioned, but the other people speaking here have mentioned. When recovering from Hurricane Harvey, it was important in rebuilding that, you know, the debt was... Sorry, I didn't realize how affected I still was. My father thankfully recovered from a coma and I'm... Sorry, I'm having emotions. Anyways, we need to ease debt to help our community recover because there will be long-term effects. Thank you for your time. That's it for me.
Thank you for your input. Our next caller is Karen Munoz, who will be speaking, followed by Matthew Downing.
Hi, my name's Karen Munoz. I'm a law student at St. Mary's School of Law and a member of an organization called People's Parity Project. At People's Parity Project, we care, we believe that the law works to protect corporations and not to protect people. That said, we think that everything CPS Energy has done this year, in the past six months, between the lawsuit, stopping the petitions, all of this, this last week, are absolutely egregious. So that's sort of context about who I am. Further, I live on Medical Drive, so I'm lucky enough to have lost power for maybe a total of 30 minutes. Which sucks, right? Because I'm lucky enough to have power, but also have to pick up the slack when CPS Energy and ERCOT and everyone else fails. I sat here again lucky that I had energy, but also worried about our neighbors that are experiencing homelessness. People that do have homes and do not have light, did not have light, still can't pay for the bills that you are going to send them. People that are incarcerated, Bear County jails, right? All of these, all of this affects you deeper than it does me. And I'm very sure that I had, me and the rest of the community, feel deeper for each of those communities than you do. I heard the CEO say that she's doing, she feels for us, and there's many things that we're going to have to do to continue improving. And I think that she has an incredible salary that she can turn over to help pay for these bills that does not fall on the consumer. The more alternative options for her, one, waive bills for the duration of the storm; two, end our dependence on fossil fuels entirely; three, strengthen energy efficiency and conservation programs; four, increase public accountability by making the City Council the governing board of CPS so that it actually serves to be a true public utility company. I'm absolutely disturbed and disgusted by you all. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Next speaker is Matthew Downing, followed by Thalia Chavez.
Hey, Matthew Downing. So I feel like I've heard CPS try to hide behind weather events and thanking the workers like this weather everyone knows they should have anticipated. And of course, we're thankful for the workers, but the reason they were working in freezing temperatures in the first place was because of CPS's failure to invest in properly maintaining the energy supply chain and their failure to diversify energy sources by going hard on solar and wind. I'm reading that people are going to be paying for this energy bill for like 15 years, like this one energy bill, like over a decade? And all based on this ridiculous idea of like, oh yes, you're just paying because it's normal supply and demand? When people can't see their consumption prices, they don't really have a choice outside of CPS, and they need this energy... They need this energy to not freeze in their own homes. And it's not just about like, oh, how responsible they are or not. Like, not everyone can fly to Cancun when their kids get cold. They need the energy to stay warm. So this bill, yeah, waive it. Waive this, waive this bill. And then, end dependence on fossil fuels. You gotta go on to solar and wind, gotta weatherize these equipment. And if you can't do this, yeah, we need public accountability. Like, we need elected officials if we're going to allow CPS to be a natural monopoly like this. We need to have people in charge who are accountable. Thanks.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Thalia Chavez, followed by DeeDee Belmares. And again, you can still press zero if you have pre-registered for public comment. Thalia Chavez. Thalia Chavez. Our next speaker will then be DeeDee Belmares, followed by Lexi Garcia. DeeDee Belmares. Our next speaker then will be Lexi Garcia, followed by Catherine Sinclair.
Hi, Board of trustees. My name is Lexi Garcia. I'm a member of the Recall CPS Coalition as well as a resident and late payer. I have no representative on this board. Like so many who took time out of their day to address you and the thousands of others who are forced to go back to work so that they can pay for the unimaginable bills we face and cannot make your inaccessible meetings, I'm here to speak to the immense human suffering you have on your hands, the totality of which isn't even complete and still being lived out by people right now all across the state. We collectively sit with a global task of stopping the destruction and an end to our lives. And this week's past events showed the truth that we need you to see. The climate crisis is here and it's killing us. With a board that is only business-connected, people locally, with greed as a motivator, the only thing that CPS Energy and this fake public utility will be able to reliably provide to us without any change is more suffering. The long history of all of us in San Antonio and climate activists and just community members begging to be heard by you should fill you with shame. We demand that our bills be waived for the duration of the storm. We demand that we end our dependence on fossil fuels and close spruce. And we demand increased funding to energy efficiency programs. And we demand the Climate Action Plan be implemented. We demand answers. These demands are the same as they were before. We demand that our public utility is imaginative enough to meet the crisis and bring the people in in a meaningful way. Because not a single person should bear the cost of the system's abject failures, not with our payment and not with our lives.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Catherine Sinclair, followed by Terry Latin.
Good afternoon, this is Catherine Sinclair. I'm a resident of Valentine Ranch, Northern Halotas. The subdivisions of Valentine Ranch, Big Valley and Country View Estates were left completely without power as of February 16th. The subdivisions account for approximately 200 homes in Northern Halotas. Rolling blackouts that let the rest of San Antonio experience were short-lived out here as we very quickly went to a complete blackout the first day. It would seem that the rolling blackouts caused our transformers to blow. We need to ask how the rolling blackouts areas were determined as they were very damaging to the system CPS had set in place for our area. It seemed that there are some areas in Greater San Antonio that never lost power, specifically the downtown area of San Antonio. And as a city, does San Antonio not have Bronic and Canavera available for such emergencies? Were they ever implemented or considered for use? And if not, why? Damages are still being assessed on properties out here, but I've already gotten reports at home stating that experienced losses up to $10,000 as a result of a lack of power, water lack caused by the lack of power. Communication we actually did receive from CPS automated system was of no use to the residents of this town here, who all reported receiving power restored messages, but lost the time with no power. So they once again had to call in to advise that there was in fact no power here. False hope like that is just wrong. We were aware that the CPS crews were on-site of PR 37 as early as the 17th of February and were on and off-site for the whole week, so most of the homes would have to wait until February 20th for the repair works to be done. In the meantime, no power, no water. We know the crews were doing their best they could and we definitely appreciate them. But as remote as we are, it would seem a better infrastructure for our power needs must be put in place. We would ask that CPS review the system in place for this area. We may not be in San Antonio proper, but we are still CPS customers and CPS services are powering. And to close, I will echo the first speaker that came on, no power, no bills. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Terry Latin, followed by Victoria Guajardo.
Yes, my name is Terry Latin. I want to speak about the winter storm. Thank you for allowing me to speak my opinions. I have been a San Antonio resident for over 44 years, and before the winter storm, I was overall pleased with CPS from the rates to keeping the lights on to crews restoring the power after storms. You may have already addressed my concerns talking about the command center. And my question is, can rate increases like for the storm be announced in a time of the matter via social media, radio, TV, etc., that the rates went up to 22,000%? I would immediately monitor my energy a lot closer, and I'm sure a lot of other folks would have too. And I feel that we need to keep coal and natural gas as a backup besides green energy. And when I think of electrical energy, I think of CPS, not ERCOT. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Victoria Guajardo, followed by Alex Amador. Victoria Guajardo. Our next caller then will be Alex Amador, followed by Alejandro Lopez. Alex Amador. Our next speaker then will be Alejandro Lopez, followed by Jeffrey Okolo. Alejandro Lopez. All right, our next speaker here will be Jeffrey Okolo, followed by Vincent Ramirez.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Jeffrey Okolo. I'm a resident of San Antonio. My call primarily concerns two issues. How will CPS help residents? And will CPS do better to prepare for severe weather in the future? Whether it's property damage, food spoilage, or areas still under boil notice, people are still reeling from the winter storm. Unfortunately, CPS plans to add additional concerns by floating this 10-year payment plan for energy used during the winter storm. Though it is a free market, the desire to avoid hypothermia and below freezing weather is inelastic. Though it is a free market, areas do not have reliable access to electricity through a winter storm. Though it is a free market, CPS is the only energy provider in San Antonio, and no one could expect energy providers would engage in price gouging artificially driving up the price per kilowatt. Helping San Antonio residents should be the priority. Rather than passing the cost of deregulated market and ill-equipped or ill-prepared grid onto residents, CPS should push back on the actors engaging in price gouging. The bills for duration of the storm should be waived, full stop. Due to climate change, severe weather conditions will become more common, so it is important we have a plan moving forward. Specific policies like weatherizing infrastructure and making a unified push to reform the structure of Texas' energy market must be coupled with broader changes which prioritize increasing energy efficiency and conservation efforts, as well as ending our over-dependence on fossil fuels. We can start by closing out Spruce Coal Power Plant in 2030 and increasing investments in renewables. We don't want vague promises. We don't want empty platitudes. CPS needs to draft and make public reports surrounding the issue at hand. The process must be transparent to keep San Antonio residents informed on what steps CPS took during the storm and what steps will be taken moving forward so a situation like this does not happen again. Y'all get paid an ample amount. Y'all need to be proactive and do better. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Vincent Ramirez, followed by Isabel Castro.
Good afternoon CPS Board members, and thank you for giving me the chance to speak today. I also want to thank all the workers who braved the weather to help restore our power. My name is Vincent Ramirez, and I'm a resident of San Antonio's District 8. I'm here today to condemn the failures of CPS Energy due to lack of planning and to get a guarantee that those who were left without power for days, myself included in the freezing temperature, will not have to pay for the unpreparedness and inadequate weatherization programs implemented by CPS Energy. I am also here to request an increase in public accountability by having City Council members serve as a governing board for the CPS Energy. With direct City Council oversight, we, the citizens, could have more involvement with how our money is spent, as well as having access to information that is otherwise withheld from us, including information on the continued reliance on the Spruce Coal Plant and any plans for future rate hikes due to the extensive power outages. We deserve to know if our money is being utilized to invest in adequate infrastructure that can withstand the extreme climate conditions that are projected for the future instead of putting Band-Aids on our already faulty system. Since there was an abundance of warnings on how our grid would fail if we were to face a snowstorm like we just had, and even more recommendations on how to prepare for it, I'm wondering how our money is being spent to better serve us. I also wonder how a years-long payment plan is any form of relief? Can we get assurance that we will not be forced to pay the cost of CPS Energy's negligence? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker will be Isabel Castro, followed by Karen Gutierrez. Isabel Castro. Our next speaker then will be Karen Gutierrez, followed by Ashley McDonald.
Hi, good afternoon, Board.
Hi, good afternoon Board. My name is Karen Gutierrez, and I am a San Antonio resident residing in the 78204 area. The worst part of my experience during last week's outages was the mental abuse and neglect I felt after experiencing agonizing hours of having my electricity turned on and off from minutes to seconds at a time, and ultimately experiencing a complete blackout. I blame CPS for the horrid lack of transparency in providing information to customers of what was happening in real time. CPS failed to provide its customers information regarding what to expect and how to prepare before, during, and after the winter storm. To add insult to injury, a quarter mile from me, I could see downtown buildings with electricity that many after all turned out to be empty, as I sat in my dark apartment with my daughter. And for that, I demand that our electrical bills be waived. Although your intention may have been to perform rolling outages during this winter storm, it is very clear that electricity was not allocated equally throughout the city, but in fact were very much isolated outages. My question to you is, how did you decide who was going, which neighborhoods were going to be distributing electricity, and who was not? And what specific measures are being taken now to provide future emergency electrical relief and accurate information to your customers for future outages? Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Ashley McDonald, followed by Garian Benavides. Ashley McDonald. Our next speaker will then be Garian Benavides, followed by Richard Perez. Garian Benavides. Our next speaker then will be Richard Perez, followed by Stephanie Bowen.
Good afternoon Chairman Mackey and members of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. My name is Richard Pettis, and I serve as the President and CEO of the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. This week has been one of the most shocking and challenging for Texans and San Antonians in recent memory. The winter storm brought with it unprecedented low temperatures, blackouts, frozen water pipes, breaks, shortages, impassable roadways, and a real sense of despair. But with every night comes its dawn. Through it all, San Antonians stepped up to help their neighbors. Some took in cold relatives and friends. Business owners donated their money and supplies or prepared meals for families without basic necessities, for the elderly, for our first responders, and for those in need. We did what our city always does. We reached out a hand and helped serve our citizens as one city. We must now focus on pandemic, weather, and economic recovery like never before. Criticism and blame, while natural human tendencies during times of anger, fear, and frustration cannot and must not drive our actions and cloud our focus. A full and proper review of what occurred last week will come at the proper time, guiding our actions so that proper preparations will be made to ensure the experiences of this past week will never be repeated. San Antonio has a deep history of coming together and a long record of retooling and working to overcome challenges. There is no reason for this week to be any different. As always, your chamber is eager to assist in any way we can. Trustees, the light we see at the end of the long tunnel is not a train, it is actually the light of renewal and hope. We are extremely grateful and proud to be part of such a caring and generous city. Together, we will get through this. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Stephanie Bowen, followed by Aaron Arguello. Stephanie Bowen. Our next speaker then will be Aaron Arguello, followed by Katie Pruitt.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Aaron Arguello. I am a CPS ratepayer, and I am the San Antonio advocacy organizer at Move Texas. Last week's polar vortex proved the climate crisis is not some theoretical event in the future. It is here, and the energy crisis that ensued was entirely preventable. Our community cannot and will not wait for the kind of change necessary to prevent the next extreme climate event from being just as deadly as the past weeks. The time is now. CPS must immediately implement the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan adopted by City Council back in 2019, as well as strengthen energy efficiency and conservation programs. We must end our dependence on fossil fuels, specifically on one of our community's largest polluters, the Spruce Coal Plant, and move to reliable renewables like wind, solar, and battery storage. If we fail to do this, we can be certain we will see another event like last week sooner rather than later. Spruce must be closed by 2030, the future of San Antonio and our planet depend on it. In addition to addressing the causes behind the climate destabilization that led to this catastrophe, we must address debt. Spreading the cost of the disaster over a decade or longer is entirely unacceptable. After using debt obligation as a legal argument against a democratic petition effort led by ratepayers, CPS now wants to pass debt on to customers to avoid potentially incurring even more debt. Customers who in their own right are already in debt, be it medical, student loans, mortgage, credit cards, automotive, or otherwise. Many of those customers were unable to even work during the duration of the period they're now being expected to pay for. The conversation should be about how to provide bill relief for customers, not how to make them pay. Casting the costs down to the community who bore the brunt of the impact is unconscionable. Do what is right for working people and find another way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Katie Pruitt, followed by Richard Palomo. And again, you can still press zero if you have not done so already if you pre-register to speak during this time. We are currently on number 36 of 108, so thank you for bearing with us here. With that, our next speaker is Katie Pruitt, followed by Richard Palomo.
Hi, I'm Katie, resident of District 1. Shout out to all the community members so far who've spoken about the environmental aspects of this, as well as the political issues and the underlying issues of capitalism and environmental racism. I want to speak directly to the lack of communication for last week. Earlier on, Gold Williams, you spoke about like everyone being able to call in right now, and we want to help and answer any questions you may have or any concerns. But that wasn't the energy that was displayed or felt last week. And it was appalling. Thousands of people were left in the dark, both literally and vigorously. And not to mention the thousands of people who rely on electricity at home for things like oxygen tanks and ventilators. There was no communication, and I'm wondering why there isn't an entire external communications team with a crisis communication plan in place for something like this that we knew was coming. It's very upsetting, disappointing, I'm disgusted. I, you know, don't, I am not able to speak for everyone else, but the statement earlier on and the apology is BS, to be honest. What was very clear is for last week from CPS was the incompetence, the lack of compassion for the community, and you fail the community, and I think you need to know that, hear it loud and clear. As well as this whole people-first philosophy is very questionable, as well as your commitment to clean energy. Please do better.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Richard Palomo, followed by Robert Perez.
Good afternoon, this is Board President, Trustees, and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to address the CPS Board of Trustees. For the record, my name is Richard Palomo. I'm a retired US Navy Senior Chief with experience in emergency management. This is my first, and certainly not my last time, to address the CPS Board of Trustees. I plan to be an advocate for those citizens in our community that don't have a voice here. I would like to address the Board about the CPS response during last week's major winter storm. First, I want to acknowledge the CPS line workers for their efforts during our winter storm. Kudos to each one of them. As a ratepayer and citizen of San Antonio, I'm upset and mad with the way this emergency was mismanaged by COSA, CPS, and FAS. I have three grandkids and an 87-year-old father that had to endure three days without power. I want you to hear me, three days without power. We had to go into survival mode. This never should have happened. This happens in underdeveloped countries. No one is asking the tough questions. We were ill-prepared at all levels of government for this winter storm. We underestimated the power of this storm. All CPS systems should have been winterized prior. CPS rolled the dice, and the citizens of San Antonio lost. Several pre-planned actions should have taken place prior to the storm arriving. Once the storm arrived, the plan of action should have been activated. The following actions have happened. A, a plan of action with contingency plans for X, Y, and Z. B, a tabletop exercise prior to the winter storm to identify any gaps in your plans and make reservations as necessary. You should have had a solid communications plan, as the previous caller alluded to, a crisis communication plan. You should have had strategic repositioning of CPS assets throughout Burt County prior to the storm arriving. CPS should have recalled all essential emergency management team members on Sunday, February 14th, to monitor the storm's development and impact on electricity for ratepayers. And in closing, I have a lot more, but I only have two minutes. But in closing, next steps, an independent third-party investigation and audit to review all facets of CPS emergency plans, and to evaluate CPS performance during the storm. Identify weaknesses and gaps in the lessons learned. And I'm tired apologies, produce an after-action report and make it public, improve your customer service. I email the CPS of Trustees and...
Thank you for your input. You have been muted now. Our next speaker is Robert Perez, followed by Lydia Pippin.
Hi, my name is Robert Pettis. I live in District 6. I was without power from Sunday until Thursday, so I was very disappointed in the energy availability of our whole state. Now, just as a city's perspective, I would like to throw my hat in for a Crisis Management Strategy Division, because clearly does not exist at CPS. In 2019, you had a $1.9 billion revenue for that whole year. So I suggest you use that profit that you make that year to pay for this. I would say at least February needs to be waived, as these rate increases over a 10-year plan for something that we did not sign up for is totally unacceptable. And with everything else that goes on, I love diesel fuel, gasoline, oil, I'm all about that. I'm also for green energy, but you need to have the wind turbines be winterized with the grid heaters, rubber balloons, and some of them have, like on small airplanes. You need to invest in those, as well as, let's say, hydrogen power plants. I'm okay with gas, but you need to winterize the line. Lastly, I'd like to be enclosed. You need to step up and take some pay cuts to the executives, just like how BAFTA CEOs and CFOs have done to keep their hospitals running. I think it's unacceptable to charge San Antonians money when they suffered through a crisis like this, especially me and my whole neighborhood did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Lydia Pippin, followed by William D. Johnson.
Good afternoon Board members. My name is Lydia Pippin, and I am a CPS customer. This whole situation still has us all quite shaken up. I have no other choice for electricity, except for the monopoly that you control. Did you specifically sell our energy, full knowing that epic storm was on its way, then buy it back at extreme markup? It is unconscionable to expect CPS customers to pay for your mistake. On Saturday, my mother had been released from the hospital, and we were rushing to get her home to safety. When we arrived, we spent the night with no power. The next day after the snow came, my son risked his life to come to rescue us, to take us to his home where he had a generator, thankfully, and a fireplace. All the people here where she lives, in her retirement community, were not so lucky. They have a three-story complex. The elevators were out, the lights were out, they were sitting in the dark, cold, the food going bad in the refrigerators. We all have to still empty our refrigerators and pay again to replenish the food that you wasted. You turned off our power. You did not have a good plan, and here we pay for it. My pets were left at home alone in the dark also. So many people are still looking for water or milk. It's like all of these things just cause one thing to roll over into another. Yes, windmills are wonderful, not when they're frozen. Solar panels are lovely, not when they're covered with snow, and useless. We have natural gas. You closed Bronning Lake. That was another supply that you had at your disposal that you shut down.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is William D. Johnson, followed by Tina Cortez. William D. Johnson. Our next speaker then will be Tina Cortez, followed by Felix Pedron.
Yes, hello. My name is Tina Cortez, and I live in District 3. I don't even know where to begin. There's just so much to express here. I'm going to start off with something that I saw, and that was annotated by somebody else, and I'm going to read it, because this is really what it comes down to. It comes down to corruption. It comes down to poor planning. It comes down to mismanagement, and I'm very upset. We need answers. I don't want none of this, like other people have expressed, like, let's forget about it and let's go on. No, we need to get down to the bottom of things. ERCOT is a nonprofit in charge of our Texas energy. There is a 15-member board that provides oversight. This ERCOT is a profit company. The chairman is Sally A. Talbert, he lives in Michigan. The last chair is Peter Crampton, he lives in Germany.
Thank you for your input. Our next caller is Felix Pedron, followed by Russell D. Seal. Felix Pedron. Our next caller then will be Russell Seal, followed by Raul Villarreal.
Yes, Board, my name is Russell Seal, and I have been a frequent participant in this process, and I'm so happy to see so many more people calling in and expressing their rage. I share the rage. My daughter was out of power for 80 hours. I would have given anything to have my power turned off to give her a few hours of warmth. But let's move on. Regulation, our deregulated market, the lack of regulation and the fear of regulation is the problem. CPS needs to be lobbying tomorrow at the State Legislature for regulation. CPS needs to be lobbying tomorrow at the state legislature for regulation to see that their partners are doing what they're supposed to be doing. This is a failure at the state level for not being connected to the nationwide grid so we're all helping each other out. Please embrace regulation, embrace renewable energies, batteries. We need to have a plan to pay for batteries with a peak power charge, but start lobbying tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Raul Villarreal, followed by Nancy Fullerton. Our next speaker then is Nancy Fullerton, followed by Rosemary Flagel. Our next speaker then is Rosemary Flagel, followed by Al Castro. Our next caller is Al Castro, followed by Maria Rodriguez. Our next speaker is Maria Rodriguez, followed by Abner Trevino.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Maria Rodriguez, and I live in the 78254 zip code in the Wild Horse subdivision of Braun. And I was one of the lucky people that had a home that had 96 hours without electricity. My house inside was down to 13 degrees. My brother, I'm 57, so I've lived in Texas, I was born and raised here in San Antonio. I'm 57. My brother is 70. It got so bad that the food was on in our refrigerators after three days, so we had to put his insulin out in the snow. So it's very sad what we went through. It's our neighbors, you know, we were helping each other out, but something needs to be done. If me, I've had several appliances upgraded, and I had to have them up to code, which cost me money, and that includes covering the pipes. So CPS, you need to do what you need to do to keep our grid in order so that this doesn't happen again, because there was a time where I was crying when I looked out the window and I saw the snow, knowing that my brother's insulin was out there and instead of him in the refrigerator. So y'all need to do something and step up, and the CEO of CPS, you need to step down because I called both phone numbers, but shoot your birth may number and your help number, and all I got was, "If you have a gasoline, do you have an outage?" And it didn't matter. If it hadn't been for David Chassler, me calling him in the middle of the night from Channel Four and me pleading with him to be our voice, I don't think we would have had power today. So you all need to do something. And you, the person, the CEO from CPS needs to step down, and ERCOT needs to get their shit together. He's my friend, but I was on call for. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Abner Trevino, followed by Rosemary Flagel. And we are at the moment on caller 49 of our list here for public comment. And again, just another reminder, if you have not done so already, you are still able to press zero to be able to speak. So our next caller is Abner Trevino, followed by Rosemary Flagel. Our next speaker will be Rosemary Flagel, followed by Shelley Van Berg.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this afternoon. This past week was very, very catastrophic for many residents. I do live outside, north of 1604, and we too were without power, but there really needs to be some sort of transparency, you know, starting off with what has the CPS done to change what was reported for them to update previously when this storm happened before many times. There has to be some kind of accountability in departments being transparent for the community, for residents to see that there have been improvements that have been made so that this does not happen again. I do like gas because gas was available to us during this time, and it did help, but we too were without electricity and were without water for days. But I also wanted to find out, there was a tweet and also an email that was sent out saying that there was nothing that we needed to do prior to this event. Fortunately, we jumped into action and did fill our tubs up with water. We did get our pipes wrapped, but there has to be some kind of communication with all of the social media that is out there for everyone to be able to see what we need to do to prepare our families, our homes, the food that we're going to need for days to be able to live, so that way when HEB cannot provide milk for babies and for families, we have to be prepared and we have to be allowed the transparency from our city officials and also from the people that are running CPS and SARS. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Shelley Van Berg, followed by Sheri Russell. Our next speaker then is Sheri Russell, followed by Gloria Rankin.
Hi, my name is Sheri Russell. I'm relatively new to San Antonio, but I love it. It's just really sad to me that we're not talking about the people that had medical issues whose equipment didn't work because of no power. Survivors paying for loved ones freezing to death, loss of food, plants, and pets, and we, the ones who lost, should pay the ones who are responsible for our loss. Maybe consider rebates for customers and repairs for your faulty equipment. Please, rolling blackouts with the truth, we would have been better prepared, we could have prepared better. My electric was out for four days, Sunday to Thursday. It came on Thursday morning. What CPS, what you're proposing is likely buying a car, telling the dealer he or she had to furnish my gas, oil, and tires, and so I say they don't have to anymore. I think at this point CPS needs to dig deep into their own pockets and use past rate hikes for what they said they raised rates for, and buy and install some insulation for gas, coal, and green facilities.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Gloria Rankin, followed by Rita Thies. Our next speaker then will be Rita Thies, followed by Gotil Samir.
Hi, this is Rita Thies, and I am a San Antonio resident, born and raised, and I just have a couple of things. Obviously, you know, we're in recovery mode, but I just would like, you know, to point out a couple of things that CPS requested that the Public Information Documents Act showing our CPS accounts be suspended behind our backs starting on February 15th, and that was last Monday. How could I monitor my usage during a crisis if you cut my access to that public information? Now you want us to pay the bills that are so excessive that you're looking at a 15-year repayment. Paula, you've been the CEO since 2004. You were CEO for the 2011 weather event and going on 17 years as CEO. Surely the lessons learned would at least be for worst-case scenario for our city's disaster recovery plan. Is the disaster recovery plan online for public viewing? The trust is gone, and saying you're sorry is empty. People first is not something you should say any longer. The lack of leadership and communication was not there from the beginning, and then when the mayor brought it to your attention at the emergency meeting to share information with the public, you did not ask. The mayor asked you point-blank why the water pump circuits were not on critical circuits. The CEO, your behavior did not display any sense of urgency and acted like it was the first time anyone asked you that. I would like to request the board to make this an action item on a long-term list for review. Our confidence is not in the CEO to ensure we're going to get the best support on our CPS bills. I am sure the public has lots of questions as you are sorting through the bills. Can a forum be created to ask written questions that could be answered online or through a video response? For instance, if my bill has a 10- to 15-year plan and I decide to sell my home and move out of state or move within San Antonio, will CPS expect the balance to be paid in full, or will this balance be like a credit card, and will interest be owed to the outstanding balance? And when is the paid-in-full balance expected? It's important enough that I state the fact again, that CPS requested the Public Information Documents Act showing our CPS accounts be suspended behind our backs starting on September 15th, and that was last Monday. How are we supposed to monitor our usage?
Thank you for your input. You have been muted. You have exhausted your two minutes. Our next speaker is Gotil Samir, followed by Alan Montemeyer. Our next speaker then will be Alan Montemeyer, followed by Ben Harrison.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. It would be very easy to continue to concentrate on what didn't work in the past week. Obviously, there was plenty of that, and there will be a lot more discussion and a lot more finger-pointing going on. However, I would like to concentrate on some of the things that did work this week. The Nest thermostat in our home has an energy rush hour feature on it, and CPS availed themselves of that numerous times during the outage, and I feel like that did help lower the load. I would like to see those kinds of conservation programs and load control programs continue and expanded at CPS Energy. Obviously, conservation and efficiency for the people is a prime element of this, where we can lower these loads during extreme events, whether it is hot or cold. You have a proposal, I think, for a project at the H2Ox facility, which is going to be a solar plus storage that would have guaranteed, at least for some period of time, not only power but water for that facility. I'm hoping that you take this as an onus to proceed a pace on that project and perhaps even expand the storage capabilities of that project. There is going to be a lot of finger-pointing in all of this, and I really want to encourage CPS to have increased transparency and cooperation. We look forward to much more dialogue on this, particularly on your Flexible Path Resource Plan. And as we move forward, I'm hoping that we can all move forward together for a better future, and I do want to thank all the people who have been on for so long to comment here. It is difficult to stay on this long, however, it's important. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Ben Harrison, followed by Jalen McKee Rodriguez. All right, moving on to our 57th caller here. We have our next speaker, Jalen McKee Rodriguez, followed by Danagi Catherine Kettelman.
My name is Jalen McKee Rodriguez, and I'm a resident of District Two, 78218. And first of all, people have died. Ms. Gold Williams, this is not a beautiful day just because the sun is out. Because of last week, we're going to continue to have to decide what we can afford to lose in order to survive. When our food spoiled, we stood in crowded HEB lines to buy canned vegetables because there was no more meat or produce to feed our families. When our electricity stopped, we huddled together in the freezing cold, shivering, wondering when it would end. Our pipes burst, and we have to search for the money to have them repaired, and we still have bills to pay, and now have to pay even more over the next several years due to your failures. And we have to call in during work hours, and y'all can't even have cameras on. You can't have captions or interpreters. This has to be audio. The decisions you make need to be based on what we're sharing today and the stories y'all refuse to listen to and the people who can't make it here. These are traumas that your negligence has inflicted. This is not over just because the sun is out again. We need relief now more than ever in this climate crisis within an ongoing pandemic. We should not have to bear the brunt of a catastrophic failure that you could have prevented, a crisis that has now launched us into further financial pain and uncertainty. The fact that water pumping stations are not considered critical infrastructure means CPS needs to overhaul its protocol and definitions for what critical infrastructure is. We also need to stop pretending that these rolling blackouts and extended outages affected only all communities equally. We're aware of the poor decisions that led to this crisis and rehashing these details in your slides. Slides we can't even see today will not work to solve anything. It's clear CPS Energy cannot rely on the state or ERCOT's infrastructure and must develop a much stronger plan for when, not if, but when this happens again. Bye. Bye.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Danagi Catherine Kettelman, followed by Kevin Conlin. Danagi Catherine Kettelman? Our next speaker then will be Kevin Conlin, followed by Patricia Morris.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kevin Conlin. I'm a resident of San Antonio's North Side and a recent transplant from Columbus, Ohio. So I have a lot of experience with cold weather, but I don't think I've ever experienced anything like this. I wasn't here back then, but apparently everyone here in Texas cried about the weather-related outages from a winter storm that happened back in 2011. And a lot of promises were made that it wouldn't happen again. Reports were generated that pointed to the problems, but nothing was enforced, so nothing was done. And we're back at this point again 10 years later due to no winterizing of our systems. Now we're looking at costs. My neighbor mentioned a Bloomberg report that said approximately $50 billion in emergency fuel purchases were made. And add to that $50 billion in lost productivity, so we're looking at $100 billion cost for something that could have been avoided if we just had stronger regulatory hand by the legislature and the governor. And this doesn't even begin to address the immediate costs in losses of property, personal injury, and even death caused by this freeze. Again, based on the storm 10 years ago and the reports that were written, the state legislature, the Public Utility Commission, the Electric Liability Council of Texas, yes, that's a joke. And of course, you at CPS knew that this weather event was likely, and it would happen based on reports that were written after the last freeze. Why then were winter preparations so poor? I say that as an Ohioan who's lived through winter storms 10 times worse than this. As a so-called public utility, you have a responsibility to the public. It's part of your name. What you have is a responsibility to tell us what's going on so we can make sure we can make adequate plans, make sure it doesn't happen again, and do something besides write a meaningless report that'll gather dust on a shelf. You have failed your accountability mandate. You must do better. We expect it.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Patricia Morris, followed by Jessica Morin.
Hi, my name is Patricia Morris. I live in the Waldorf subdivision off of Braun Road at 78254. I've been in San Antonio all my life, which will be 60 years this year. I lived in the country in 1985 in the CPS area and never experienced an outage. Also, in 2011, never have, ever experienced an outage like this, ever. I want to know, my question is, I called every day, couple of times a day, and all I got was a recording, as a lady mentioned earlier. Not only do I have an elderly son that requires a breathing machine at night, that he went 96 hours, 104 hours total, which was four days and eight hours. I called in all day long. One night, I was desperate, on Wednesday night, I called in, and I got ahold of an angel of yours, an employee named Victoria. Her employee number is 102326. Why would, why do I get somebody late at night, but I can't get nobody during the daytime? That is, there's a problem there. This little girl was my angel. Somehow, she answered the phone. Why at 8:00? I was on the phone from 8:00 to 9:00 that night. She took my information. She goes, she came back and she apologized profusely. She says, "When you did that first routing thing, you got hung in a system, and there were so many outages, they couldn't even find out that we were totally out in the Waldorf subdivision." Also, we had an elderly neighbor that was 97 years old. My husband, her son fell in the driveway and broke his ribs. We had to go over and help them. I want to know why we couldn't get ahold of anybody, just like everybody else was saying. They were getting messages saying that we were able to, our electricity was restored and everything. But again, please make sure Victoria gets, kudos to her because she even called me back at 12:00 midnight, and I didn't hear the phone, and it got disconnected. Thank you so much. Something's got to be done.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Jessica Morin, followed by Katie Smith. And again, if you haven't done so already, please go ahead and press zero right now if you have pre-registered to speak during this time. Again, press zero if you have not done so already to get in line to speak. Jessica Morin? Our next speaker then is Katie Smith, followed by Terry Harold. Katie Smith? Moving on, our next speaker is Terry Harold, followed by John Vegas. Terry Harold? Our next speaker, Brian Donahoe, followed by Beatriz Rodriguez.
Hello, yes, my name is Brian Donahoe. I'm going to be covering bullets on the agenda, five and seven, with my question. I believe it was mentioned that the overage charges are going to be placed on hold while the company works with negotiation practices in order to keep them at the most minimal that they can be. So I guess I'm wondering, while that process is taking place in the negotiations, will there be communications sent as to when we'll be able to see what the usage was so we can start preparing for what kind of arrangements we need to make going forward? That's really basically it. Those two bullets are covered, I guess, in that one question. Thanks much.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Beatriz Rodriguez, followed by Linda Gassaway. And another reminder, if you haven't done so, please press zero to get in line here to speak during public comments if you have pre-registered. So again, you can still press zero. Beatriz Rodriguez? Beatriz Rodriguez? Our next speaker then is Linda Gassaway, followed by Diane Townsend. Linda Gassaway? Our next speaker, Diane Townsend, followed by Christopher Herring. Diane Townsend? Our next speaker, this is our 69th speaker, Christopher Herring, followed by Sherry Adi.
Well, first of all, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Christopher Herring. I'm the Executive Director of Global Chamber San Antonio, and I also oversee Global Chamber Texas. I speak today because I'm concerned that we are in an unprecedented time and events, whether it's the coronavirus or whether it's this catastrophe that we just experienced in the cities of Houston, Dallas, Austin, and even San Antonio. We have all been shut down. And I personally believe in the leadership of our CEO, Paula Gold Williams. And I think that she's very good at building relationships, and as a part of her solution, she mentioned that would be a part of what she would do. I also believe that we have failed to put God into this equation. We should search our faith as well. We pray because we believe in God. And as a community, we need to do more of that. I would suggest that in Military City USA, that CPS Energy form some form of a partnership with Joint Base San Antonio to exercise this scenario and prepare for the next time this happens so we can be the very best. We have the right people in this city that can help. The chief who spoke earlier is right on point. We have the ability to be much better. So I encourage city leadership, all the way to the state leadership, to do things much differently. We know that this is not a problem of CPS Energy. We also ask for support of the small businesses and that the small business community not be pushed into the solution set of paying this. But we need relief and support as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Sherry Adi, followed by Julian Harris. Sherry Adi? Next speaker, Julian Harris, followed by Rachel Rabani. Julian Harris? Speaker number 72, we have Rachel Rabani, followed by Olivia De La Garza.
Hello? Can everyone hear me?
Hi, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great, so my name is Rachel Rabani. I'm a resident of District 1, City Council District 1. First, no power, no bill. Two, this audio-only meeting at 1:00 PM is unacceptable. Knowing at Cali, you probably put the meeting on you. Let's be honest, you hate public input. Three, I want to say how traumatizing it was this passage to see you speak that I love so much. Go through what it did, not because it had to, not because we didn't have the resources, but because of corrupt, unregulated criminal negligence. Four, it's real simple. The burning of fossil fuels is leading to the extinction of life on Earth. Even suggesting turning the Spruce Coal Plant into a natural gas plant is insulting and proves that CPS is not taking the climate crisis seriously and is not interested in protecting our families, our communities, or even the land that is Texas. Looking at your Flexible Path report, nowhere did I see the cost of lack of clean water, the cost of no clean air, the cost of medical bills caused by fossil fuels. People are and will continue to be faceless. The cost of fleeing your home from increasing natural disasters. The cost of losing your 11-year-old son because he froze to death at home due to the fossil fuel industry's sick obsession with short-term profits. I echo Paul Weiger's comment earlier. How dare this meeting have the audacity to open up with a prayer? CPS must commit to closing the Spruce Coal Plant and transitioning completely and totally to renewable energy, and that must include a just transition to good-paying union jobs for all of our current fossil fuel workers. There is no other way forward, and everyone on this board needs to stop pretending that there is. Any other choice is criminal and will, in the near future, be pursued as crimes against humanity. To all my fellow community members who called in today to express their concerns and demand better for power, also to all those listening online, I want to say I love you, I'm with you, and we, together, will achieve regulated democratic public utilities with or without CPS.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, Olivia De La Garza, followed by Catherine Bentley. Olivia De La Garza? Our next caller, Catherine Bentley, followed by Maria Lozano.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Bentley. I am a CPS residential ratepayer who is within San Antonio City Council District 10, represented by John Courage. I do not believe that I need to repeat the emotions and words expressed before me that tell a horrifying story of human misery, poor infrastructure planning and maintenance, despicable communication with and advocacy for the community, and willful ignorance of the ongoing climate crisis, all at the feet and in the hands of CPS. Edward Kelly, my CPS quadrant trustee, and every other member of this board needs to reflect on all of the testimony here, all of the heartbreak and anger that is expressed, and all of the advice that was given. As someone with experience in managing third-party vendors for engineering projects and advocacy for other clients, the daily broadcasts that we've been seeing from CPS CEO express less than a bare minimum in effort to rebuild confidence of CPS's ability to make the right changes for the community. The current responses to questions and comments throughout multiple avenues of media are vague and show no deliverables for recovery, such as direct actions, timelines, and real financial and technical numbers to support our future as a city. It was stated that the virtual capabilities of CPS have expanded due to COVID, and yet, after almost a week, there seems to be nothing real to present to us except a prayer and empty words. With the upcoming May 1 San Antonio mayoral and city council election on the horizon, I will be keeping a close watch on what Nirenberg and Courage advocate for regarding this disaster on not only a local level, but a regional, state, and national level as I head to the ballot box. I sincerely hope that everybody else on this call who is listening does the same as they register before April 1st. I wholly agree with the efforts of New Health and CS, Sierra Club, Climate Action SA, and Move Texas and the work that they're doing to move from greed over greed. This is not over just because the sun is out.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, Maria Lozano, followed by Guadalupe Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Maria Lozano, and I live in Kirby, Texas. My zip code is 78219. My family lost power on Tuesday, February 16th, at 9:00 AM, until February 18th at 5:00 PM. That was a total of 56 hours without power, not even a flicker. Just for you to get a visual of what we endured during that time, I had to wear two long-sleeved shirts. I had to wear two long sleeve shirts, two hoodies, a knit cap, sweatpants, gloves, and three pairs of socks around and inside my home. I slept in these clothes with an additional three blankets. We could not keep warm, not even with all this clothing and all these blankets on us. On one of these days, my son and I took a walk in 32-degree weather outside, as it was much warmer outside than it was inside my home. My husband and I both worked from home, so our ability to work was also taken away from us. As we became more desperate, we decided to rent a hotel room. Ironically, the only hotel room we could find was downtown, which had full heat and water, while us over here, we had none at all. When our power was finally restored and we were able to return to our home, we had to throw out all our food, which was around $300 worth of spoiled food. This is already in addition to our hotel costs and our loss of wages. And now you all have the audacity to want to charge us for power that we never received? Why don't you bill your costs to ERCOT? Send it to them. They're responsible, just as much as you all are. You know, prior to this call, I was reading Ms. Gold Williams' bio on the CPS website, that her vision is people first, and I just have to ask, what people? Because it wasn't San Antonio. It felt more like it was ERCOT and CPS first and not people first. I wish I could talk for 56 hours so you could get just an inkling of what we went through. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, Guadalupe Gonzalez, followed by David Tenorio.
I'm Guadalupe Gonzalez. I'm a native and resident of San Antonio. I'm a CPS energy consumer, and I'm CEO of a race equity consultancy for organizational and social change named The Thrive Advisory. One decade ago, in 2011, a federal regulatory group called the North American Electric Reliability Council recommended in its report that power plants should winterize to be able to withstand, quote, "unusually severe events," end quote. Texas, including San Antonio, chose to ignore this, to praise deregulation, and to save costs of winterizing equipment. It's my understanding that San Antonio has 17 power plants. It's also my understanding that climate change is very real, and that, quote, "unusually severe climate events," end quote, is our norm now. So given the reality of climate change, what's taking so long for CPS to move to renewables and to weatherize its equipment? CPS does not appear to be a public utility because it prioritizes investors and funders over the rest of San Antonians. It avoids answering environmental advocates' questions about the J. Cave Spruce Coal Plant. We know that CPS holds meetings and makes decisions behind closed doors. Just this past week, CPS chose to keep downtown lit and heated, including their own 12-story building, Alamo Dome, Convention Center, Frost Building, Riverwalk Lights, et cetera, while sending freezing San Antonians texts asking us to conserve electricity, if we had any, to save the grid. The city claims to prioritize equity. It's characteristic for an equity-focused initiative to be led by the people most impacted and historically marginalized. CPS is racist in terms of energy. It's racist in its algorithms. CPS is racist in its governance because it is not led by its constituents most affected. CPS operations is racist and oppressive. So what is the cost to San Antonians for CPS not winterizing, not shifting to renewables, and not being anti-racist? CPS, your racism is literate.
Thank you for your input. You have exhausted your two minutes, so you have been muted. Our next speaker, David Tenorio, followed by Trudy Bishop. Our 78th caller, Trudy Bishop, followed by Chala McDonald.
Okay. Hello. I'm Trudy Bishop. I'm a lifetime resident of San Antonio. This has been an interesting past week. Thank you for this opportunity. I support and sympathize with many, if not all, of the sentiments and questions and concerns of the caller participants. They are better than I expected, with certain exceptions. Please, for those of you who are green energy advocates, I understand, but be aware that green energy at this point is not reliable. Solar and wind freeze up. They froze up in Germany. They froze up here. Coal and gas generators carry the day, and even they were compromised due to a lack of weatherization. Now, the state government in Austin has been allowing entities such as CPS financial incentivization during extreme cold spells and exceptional usage times with the hope and expectation that these energy companies will weatherize what has happened. CPS evidently did not use this financial incentive allowed by the state government in Austin. Rick Perry, in 2011, increased green energy, but this proved to be a drawback. It didn't work. It's great in the summer, but not in the snow. Omaha, Nebraska has far worse storms than we do, and this does not happen there. So we can't completely, at this point, eliminate coal, natural gas, and coal. It's not going to work, not yet. So please keep that in mind. Take care. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. Next speaker is Chala McDonald, followed by T.C. Calvert. Our next speaker, Kishua Mercer, followed by Rebecca Reyes. Another reminder before I call out our next speaker, you can still press zero if you have pre-registered to speak during this public comment section. So again, you can still press zero if you have not done so already to speak during public comment if you have pre-registered. Our next speaker, Rebecca Reyes, followed by Michelle Flores. Our 83rd caller, Michelle Flores, followed by Sharon Coe. Michelle Flores.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Michelle Flores. And first of all, I'd like to just comment, I'm very thankful for the prayer, so thank you very much. It speaks a lot about your leader, Ms. Paula, so thank you very much. And I'm also a big proponent of natural gas. So those two things, I just wanted to say. But beyond that, I'd like to say that unlike many of my San Antonians, we did not lose electricity or water. However, it is my concern that because we were not hit with power outages, we will be hit with a bill that will be crazy and unfairly high. I want to make sure that this does not happen to me or to others. We already pay a whole lot, so that is concerning. I'm also a little concerned the fact that it seemed like there was not a plan for our vulnerable population. And I don't want to keep talking about that because I know we're aware of that. But I hope in the future, we can make better plans for that, for our most vulnerable populations. The other thing I want to mention is it would be nice to have constant updates. So I know that people didn't have electricity, but if you could do like emergency broadcast reports over like text messages, or the news was about the only thing that we were getting our information from. So it would be nice. And I think one of the other callers mentioned social media. Everybody's on social media, so if you want to just put something out and kind of give us updates as to what's going on, that would have been really helpful. And if there's anything else. Oh, and I really don't think it's fair that if you do decide that we're going to have to be given this charge for this electricity issue. I really hope we can find another solution and not spread it out over so many years. It's just really, it's just not fair. And I just hope that we can find some other way to do it. And I just want to, that's all I really wanted to say. But thank you all for everything you do. And again, thank you for the prayer. It really helps. This is a very, we're in apocalyptic times, so it's very scary. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, Sharon Coe, followed by Michelle Jacobson. Next caller, Michelle Jacobson, followed by Alvira Ortiz. Our next caller, Alvira Ortiz, followed by Carol Aiken. Our next speaker, Carol Aiken, followed by Roy Mendoza. Our next speaker, Roy Mendoza, followed by Mario Bravo. Our 90th speaker, we have Mario Bravo, followed by Ashton Condell.
My name is Mario Bravo, candidate for City Council District One. Just over a year ago, as part of a small group of stakeholders, they asked the mayor and CPS Energy Board to form a public rate advisory committee for CPS Energy. The deadline to apply for a seat on that committee is this Friday. I'm asking that CPS Energy not make any decisions regarding bills for the winter storm without getting input from the new public committee. ERCOT let our state down. There's no question about that. But a challenging winter storm isn't new to Texas. ERCOT learned that we needed to winterize our energy infrastructure after the 2011 cold weather event. But ERCOT did not take steps to do so. Knowing that, what did CPS Energy do to prepare on your end? Specifically, why did CPS Energy not better isolate critical infrastructure on your circuits? Why did one-third of your customers not share in rolling blackouts to help alleviate the burden on the rest of us? CPS Energy customers paid to have smart meters installed across the city. These meters allow for two-way communication between CPS Energy and the electric meters at our homes and places of business. Please explain why you have smart meters but executed dumb rolling blackouts. Why didn't CPS Energy communicate with the public more frequently during the storm? Why didn't you tell the public how much energy prices were skyrocketing and how that could impact our bills so that those of us who did have electricity could take bigger steps to conserve energy? CPS Energy knew the risks of the Texas energy market. During the heat wave in 2019, CPS Energy made over $70 million from selling electricity to Texans outside of Bear County who were short on electricity. I remember being in your boardroom when CPS Energy celebrated how much money you made off the backs of other Texans in need. Those on the other end of that transaction got hit with big bills. What seems to have flipped your mind is what things might look like for customers when you land on the other end of that transaction, and here we are. Finally, I want to remind the public that we own CPS Energy, and City Council approves their rates and appointments of their board members. In the past, City Council has approved everything that CPS Energy asks for. We have the power to change that.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, Ashton Condell, followed by Laura Villanueva.
Thank you. My name is Ashton Condell. I'm a lifelong resident of San Antonio, born and raised. I just want to say before I get started that if wind turbines and solar panels can operate functionally in Scandinavia and Antarctica, there's no reason why we can't do that here. We need to winterize our infrastructure, clearly. Along with millions of other ratepayers, clearly, I'm frustrated for so many reasons. Chief among them is that the community has been warning me that we are unprepared for the inevitable extreme weather that our dependence on fossil fuels has caused. You all ignored us, and people died. More people will die, and the next crisis will be worse if you continue to ignore us. We're angry that city public services continues to treat the public as an adversary. Last week, you moved to suspend the release of public information regarding the storm. Back in December, you secretly moved to stop the people of San Antonio from voting on a referendum that would hold you accountable, saying that the operations of our utilities should be, quote, "insulated from public whim." Well, if there was ever a clearer piece of evidence that the demands of the Recall CPS coalition is far from a win, it was topped by the events of last week. You all accuse us of being ideologically motivated, but we're motivated by the hard truths of science and the certainty that we can do better. It is actually all of you who hold an ideological commitment when something as critical as our energy infrastructure is in the hands of for-profit enterprises. You treat the market as if it's a science, when last week made so vividly clear how market logic sails the majority of the people. But not everybody. A few people got very rich last week, while others froze to death. And those are the same people this Board of Directors would call their colleagues. No wonder the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce is saying now is not the time to play the blame game and that we all need to come together. Well, did we come together last week when our corporate skyline was lit up brilliantly while millions of San Antonians went hungry and cold in the dark? The people of San Antonio deserve better. They deserve accountability. They deserve energy democracy. We need a Green New Deal, and we need to re- We need a Green New Deal and we need to recall CPS.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, Laura Villanueva, followed by Mary King. Laura Villanueva. Next speaker, Mary King, followed by Michelle Acapani. Mary King. Our next speaker, Michelle Acapani, followed by Dick Rosmussen. Michelle Acapani. Our 95th caller, Dick Rosmussen, followed by Michael Gilbert.
Hello, my name is Dick Rosmussen and I live in San Antonio. I'm a CPS customer and I just wanted to echo my disappointment with CPS and the energy grid. I was, myself was out of energy for about 60 hours in total throughout this winter storm. And it was very disappointing to me to see that CPS was doing rolling blackouts and blackouts period to try to sustain the energy grid. But again, I think a lot of this rolls back on ERCOT and the fact that they've tried to regulate our power. And I've heard a lot of people speaking about regulating power, but to me, that's the problem. The problem is ERCOT and everyone trying to regulate our power versus deregulating. We need to deregulate and we need to have competition so that we can not have a monopoly such as CPS that is the only one that controls power to our city and to the surrounding areas. In addition, I've heard a lot of people talk about green energy. And unfortunately, green energy is not the way to go. Green energy is what failed us during this crisis. And the green energy, the windmills froze. Over 50% of the windmills froze. So there was no way to get that energy to customers. So that's not the way to go. The things that worked during this winter and this cold part was actually coal. And fortunately, I had a natural gas fireplace and a natural gas stove that allowed me to sustain myself through this time. So please look at going back to oil, natural gas, those are the things that worked. And let me say finally, about the Cortland Apartments, I lived near there. That was a disgrace. They were out of a place to live and sleep overnight and still displaced. And the hotels, because of COVID restrictions, would not let these people into their hotels even though they had no place to live. So Mayor and everyone involved, please get rid of these stupid COVID restrictions for 50% occupancy. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, Michael Gilbert, followed by Cecilia P. Cortez. Michael Gilbert. Our next speaker, Cecilia P. Cortez, followed by Donna Montoya.
Hello, this is Cecilia Cortez. Hopefully you can hear me. I'm a CPS customer and I live near Ingram and 410. My concern is on the selection of the outages that were done randomly by computer. They were very irregular and selection of neighborhoods were kind of not correct. While my neighborhood was out, others were not, such as the Northern Hill. The neighborhoods outside 1604, Petranco and 1604 are on Somerset Road and 35. Anyway, my question is, how they were done and if they can be, if that outage can be corrected, that random selection of outages can be corrected? Also, is it possible to remove essential services and businesses from neighborhood grids so they can also participate in the rotation that we supposedly were supposed to have had? Those are my concerns. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, Donna Montoya, followed by Thomas Lee. Donna Montoya. Our next speaker, Thomas Lee, followed by Sandra Martinez.
This is Thomas Lee. I had a suggestion for a marginal improvement to your system, but after listening to all the pain and suffering expressed by others on this call, I'll save my suggestion for another date. I don't want to distract you from addressing their immediate issues. But it does seem to me, it does seem to me that if you had $70 million in windfall profits in the summer due to, I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback. But if you had $70 million in windfall profits in summer, from the summer, you should have piled them back into infrastructure to prevent windfall losses, most of which of those losses you want to pass on to your ratepayers, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Next caller, Sandra Martinez, followed by Curtis Carter. Sandra Martinez. Next caller, Curtis Carter, followed by Sharon Vazbinder. Curtis Carter. Our next speaker, Sharon Vazbinder, followed by Robert Gonzalez. Sharon Vazbinder. Our next caller, Robert Gonzalez, followed by Scott Kansky. Robert Gonzalez. Our 105th caller, Scott Kansky, followed by Martha Boer.
Good afternoon, Board of Mayor. My name is Scott Kansky. I'm a San Antonio resident and organizer of Texas Rising. I'm speaking today on behalf of the over 200,000 San Antonio residents who went without power during one of the most severe winter storms Texas has seen in recent history. These residents face sub-freezing temperatures as a direct result of CPS Energy's lack of preparedness. And those who managed to keep power despite the unfair rolling outages that last summer residents without power for up to four days are now facing the uncertainty of their next CPS energy bill. The storm is proof of the impending climate crisis that demands swift and immediate action. We must turn to renewable energy sources such as wind and solar power despite widespread claims that they are unreliable. Expand our battery storage capacity and commit to closing Spruce Coal by 2030. We are also calling on CPS Energy to provide adequate and expansive bill relief and extend the moratorium on disconnections as we still find ourselves in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, which has left countless San Antonio residents unemployed and unsure of their financial future. On another note, the registration extension to speak at today's board meeting is a step in the right direction for expanding access to our public utilities. I would like to see this become a standard practice moving forward. However, an even better step towards public accessibility would have City Council, our elected officials oversee and manage this public utility. All the above demands are just the start of what CPS Energy can do to show its commitment to its duty as a public utility. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, Martha Boer, followed by Jeanette Rodriguez. Martha Boer. Our next speaker, Jeanette Rodriguez, followed by Alma Rabago. Jeanette Rodriguez. Our next speaker, Alma Rabago, followed by Stanley Gillisby. Alma Rabago. Our next speaker, Stanley Gillisby, followed by DeeDee Belmaras.
Thank you for letting me speak on this matter today. I heard a lot about the troubles that people have experienced over the last week, but no one really brought up students and the kids that went through this past week and what they had to endure. So I take it upon, especially Dr. Mackey, as a past public educator, he has to think about the students. A lot of them are low income in this city and they don't have the funds for a high-energy bill to pay that. So we have to think about the young children out there and how we can help them, not so much how we can help, I mean, those that can pay their bills. We want to help those that cannot. So we have to think about that when we are looking at raising the rates in the next couple of weeks. Because a lot of students are struggling to just have food and water, let alone their families having to endure a high-energy bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, DeeDee Belmaras, followed by Isabel Castro.
Good afternoon, I'm DeeDee Belmaras, climate justice organizer with Public Citizen. My family and I and our neighbors were fortunate enough to have maintained electricity and water during last week's freeze. So as I speak, I'm also thinking of the hundreds of thousands of people who suffered and continue to suffer from last week's freeze. I've often given public comments at these meetings and I've also emailed CPS Energy's leadership with questions that have gone unanswered. So I hope that y'all will consider my questions today and answer them publicly. So my questions are, when will CPS Energy, the Board of Trustees, finally acknowledge that continuing to run the Spruce Coal Plant is pushing us off a climate cliff that's causing events such as this freeze? What plans or actions did CPS Energy take back in 2011 to prevent the power outages that we've just experienced? Did CPS Energy take action to weatherize our infrastructure? And finally, my last question is, what will CPS Energy do to ensure that customers will not have to endure this again and share those answers publicly? Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker, Isabel Castro, followed by Gloria Rankin.
Hello, my name is Isabel Castro and I'm a resident of District 3 and CPS Quadrant 3. Residents had no prior knowledge that when the electricity failed as it did, that we would be responsible for paying exorbitant rates. CPS put out a tweet about so-called bill relief telling folks that they can pay back their bill over 10 years for power they may or may not have had. That is not relief, that is the burden. A burden the people of San Antonio are not responsible for. Waive the bills during the duration of the storm and make tracks to winterize our power structures. What happens when the power grid fails during the next extreme weather event? Is CPS going to give us another 10-year bill? Absolutely not. CPS failed and CPS should be accountable to the people of San Antonio. Disband the Board of Trustees and make City Council the governing board of our utilities. We need energy democracy now. Your flexible past plan has San Antonio at 50% renewable energy by 2040. That's terrible. We need to end our dependency on fossil fuels by 2030. Low-income and working-class folks are already feeling the effects of climate destabilization. In your words, CPS wants to create reliable, safe, secure, and resilient services. Well, that needed to happen 10 years ago. We need to prepare for extreme temperatures and be dedicated to reversing the effects of climate change for the future of San Antonio. Yes, there is blame for ERCOT and the Texas Legislature, but CPS failed on their end and it should not be the burden of the ratepayers to endure. No power, no bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last registered speaker, we have Gloria Rankin.
Hi, this is Gloria Rankin. I am a resident of San Antonio. I live in the east-southwest side of San Antonio in District 4. I am a mother of three children. I am a special education advocate and a disability rights advocate. And I will be echoing a lot of what has already been stated today. I did want to mention that we really need to not forget about our vulnerable population, which includes our medically fragile, those with disabilities, and our elderly communities. And many of them cannot go without power for very long due to medical equipment. There are backups, some of them do have backup ventilators that typically will last an additional four to eight hours. So going four days without any sort of power or generators is just not sustainable for them to be able to live. So we definitely need to take a harder look and make sure we put more focus on that population and those homes that are receiving energy and electricity from y'all to make sure that they're marked properly and that they are not part of these blackouts or brownouts, whatever it is that y'all did, sorry. And just in addition to that, our current Texas Medicaid system continually refuses to provide funding for generators. And I think due to this situation, that should also be something that's considered because people have lost their lives due to your lack of planning. People's homes were uninhabitable, people with children, people with elderly individuals, and just all of our San Antonioans that were without power or heat. And in some cases, with no water. Many children that do rely on our education system for a warm place to go and food in their bellies were denied that. And in addition, people did lose income due to this because they weren't able to work. So asking for us to pay for your mistakes is totally unacceptable. You need to be held accountable for your lack of action and pay for your mistakes and not ask us to do it. And I do feel that the City Council needs to consider taking over. And I do feel that the city council needs to consider taking over to make this right for the people of San Antonio.
Thank you for your input. That was our last registered speaker, and I will now turn the meeting back to Chair Dr. Mackey.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. And I would like to ask the board, before we get into the CEO's report, would you like to take a break, a five-minute, 10-minute break? Any input from the board members? If not, then we will proceed with the CEO's report.
All right. Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. I am ready to do my report. I do appreciate the many thoughtful comments today. My presentation was prepared pretty much up to the moment, so these comments and topics I will talk about today were established. We will continue to consider all of the input that we're getting for its improvement, including the topics that were provided today. I do look forward to the board's consideration of a special meeting before the March meeting so that we can also continue to cover topics, share information, talk about our path forward to make improvements. The presentation that I will go over today, I'm going to make it conversational. I will also have this presentation posted by the end of the day by the team, and so that'll be available again. We will be ready to answer any questions about it after the meeting. So I'm going to focus this time exclusively, of course, on the extreme weather event, the experience that we had in our community that week, and basically how CPS Energy worked through the event. And this will be high-level commentary, again, followed in a future meeting by more context, but just to go through it and answer some of the questions that we received so far. I'm going to move on to Slide 2, which is my objectives and takeaways. The perspective is, I know that there's a lot of information for us to review. We do need to look at how we're set up to address solving problems and looking at things strategically through our value pillars. That and continue to focus on reliability and affordability, that was important before the event, during the event, and will continue to be major priorities for us going forward. To look at the generation performance that we have, and I will say that every single type of generation technology we had in our portfolio, which is extremely diverse, extremely diverse, had benefits associated with the technology. Every single one, we experienced challenges from one issue or another. I think what that has proven to us is that there's no perfect technology, there's no perfect subset. I think we have to continue to optimize all the tools in our toolbox, all the generation types that we have. We have to understand their limitations and manage them, not just for summer peak, but very much for this increasing winter peak that we have. We'll talk about the outages, and there were a lot of questions about how our strategy worked or didn't work and needs improvement, and we are constantly thinking about that now, what can we do in the future. We also will take a focus on asking some other questions about what we can improve going forward and what our future opportunities are. I'm going to bypass the agenda because it basically correlates to what I just covered. I'm going to go straight to Slide 5. Yes, we do have pillars that, over the last several years, as we thought about this path forward to help the city decarbonize the grid, think about how we move forward and embrace new technologies, we still thought that, and still think today, that we have to have a balanced approach to those solutions. And we will always focus on the security of our systems. We did not, you know, we maintained physical and cybersecurity during the process, but that took a lot of vigilance during that process. We will continue to focus on safety, continue to look for how we can improve in terms of the environment and the different strategies we deploy, and then resiliency. Those are all, you know, huge four value pillars. But well before this event, during this event, and going forward, the highest priorities have been about maintaining reliability and affordability, and I very much believe we heard that over and over again today. And then we've got to make sure that we are staying on top of all the financial obligations to our customers and to what we need to do to keep viable and healthy going forward while helping our customers. I'm going on to Slide 6. This slide was prepared months ago and going back again to the primary pillars of reliability and affordability. It is challenging because we just lived it, but we have been and continue to figure, focus on how can we focus on reliability to help prevent rolling blackouts and full blackouts. What we had in front of us was the potential for a full blackout, and we've got to stay focused on all the improvements that we can do, continue to do, to make sure that doesn't happen again. And then also think about how do we keep the bills affordable? Those are continuing to be a big deal. We had a weather event that was worse than the weather event that we had in 2011. We had a weather event that stressed that and put both of those value pillars at risk and did not, we did not perform well in those instances. On Slide 7, I want to highlight, we have a unique path forward that we've been focused on, particularly as we were trying to maintain affordability for our community. We have had years of strong wholesale performance for our generating fleet, and the best year I think we've had in a long time was in our 2019 year. 2020, we did not make as much money at all. I think we peaked in 2019 somewhere in $150 to $170 million of net benefit from the wholesale book. This past year, I think, we'll be somewhere in the $45 million range. It's helpful to get benefits from the wholesale book because it does defer the cost that San Antonio residents have to pay. From that standpoint, we are constantly challenging ourselves to save money and save money and save money. And that's because that's what helps keep bills low. That is what you all, as board members, have challenged management team to do over and over again. We reinvest in terms of technology, in terms of infrastructure, in terms of trying to make the systems better. But I want to highlight, we are now at a point where it's been 11 years since the last rate increase, and, excuse me, 11 years in total, and we've only had one rate increase in the 11 years, and the last one was now seven years ago. Why is that significant? Again, we understand that affordability is extremely important to our community. Texas is typically a low-energy-cost state overall, and San Antonio tries and works hard every single day to keep our bills amongst the lowest. Our non-promotion, you don't have to be in a promotion, because oftentimes when you're in a promotion, that promotion ends and then you don't have those promotional rates. We are constantly, all year long, trying to make sure that we are one of the lowest energy market's standard every single day. And so from that standpoint, we know that we have to be frugal. We have to continue to improve, make investments, try to work on better weatherization. I will describe some of the things that we were able to do from what we learned from the 2011 event, but from that standpoint, we know that affordability continues to be important, and it aligns totally with the expectation that customers have now, keep the bills affordable. And I do very much understand how customers don't want to pay anything associated with the storm. We're going to do the best we can to bring those prices down, to work with state and local officials so that we can look for any resource we can to be helpful. What we do still need to do is maintain access to the sources of energy and access to the power markets, because again, it's one big grid, and so the ability for us to keep it all balanced and make sure that we can pass energy, get energy when we need it, and then any excess energy after we serve San Antonio, not before, but after we serve San Antonio, we can use those funds to lower the costs for San Antonians. Going on to Slide 8, there has been a lot of discussion about the big regions for the national grid, and there are basically three. There's one on the West Coast, one on the East Coast, and then ERCOT covers most of Texas, but not all of Texas. It rather stands on its own. Texas is a huge state, and typically, when there are weather patterns, they don't usually cause a longed-pronoun, day after day, pronounced day-after-day impact across the entire state. This time, in addition to going to freezing temperatures, we went down to single digits, and with wind chill factors, we went to negative temperatures, again, different than what we had seen in other years, different than what we had seen in 2011. And so there are things that we need to continue to learn and improve, realizing that this is something that happened and we thought it was a 100-year event, but with climate science and the changes in the environment, we have to assume that we have to be more ready in the future for these to happen again. Going on to Slide 9, that is the picture of ERCOT and what it looks like. Again, it's not all of the state, but it's most of the state. And the challenge and the thing that came up today is we are not connected to other states. The more connected you are, there are benefits of being able to push power back and forth across state lines, but there's also the connection of when you are all together, there are challenges to try to maintain the stability of the grid. I want to highlight that San Antonio is totally connected to the entire grid, as is every other community that ultimately you all will be able to see and highlight it in blue. And there are many times when a transmission line goes down or there's a problem with a plant, and there would be times where we can go out, power on the grid to help San Antonio and vice versa. And normally with weather events, San Antonio typically has a very calm winter period, and we have the ability to help stabilize the state, and then vice versa. When we're closer to the equator and we have hotter temperatures in some instances, then other communities across Texas can help us. Now that typically works, and that's what you see on the East and West Coast. That's what's happening. They're helping each other, make sure that there is more grid stability than by yourself. There have been questions about whether or not we had enough power and capacity for San Antonio to weather this event, so to speak, by ourselves. This is the concept. Texas, and particularly San Antonio, has always had more demand for power sometime between the months of June, July, and August. Those are our big peaks. And so out of our 7,000-plus megawatts of capacity, about 5,000, 5,100 megawatts of capacity is typically what we manage to. We do a lot of maintenance from September through May, trying to prepare for the most strenuous times on the grid. Yes, we've had some instances in 2011 and, you know, some issues around, I think, the 2018 timeframe, but even those peaks weren't exceeding the summer peak. In this instance, because it was so cold and it never warmed up, and people felt that, it was a very big challenge because without the outages, we would have exceeded the summer peak, the maximum summer peak that we would have gotten at any particular time. That is unprecedented, never, ever happened before. And so we had more demand for power because of this weather pattern that blanketed the entire state, and that was something that was very difficult to manage to. Now typically, when we're in the fall and the spring, we're shutting some plants down for long-term maintenance, maintenance that will last 30 to 45 days. It's required, again, to get those plants back on track for the summer. Once you go through and you start that outage, you can't come back in because you risk potentially causing a fatal failure inside of that plant, and then you may never get that back for your summer peak. So from that standpoint, we had at least one plant that was out that we could have not brought on. There was a question about what that is. We had a unit that could not come back in the middle of a planned maintenance outage. It's like if you had a car that had an engine overhaul, but you needed to drive it the next day, you're not going to get it back the next day. You've got to complete that overhaul to get it back. So when CPS Energy was managing the entire grid, we're participating in a market that really has, again, had low prices for a very, very, very long time. It's designed to be an energy-only market. It's designed to be marginal, cost-only. It's designed to keep the prices as low as possible. Other markets actually have costs increased in their prices because you'll pay for capacity. When you pay for capacity, then you can put in more elements associated with reliability, but that's not our market. And the benefit of that, again, is to keep the prices low. I will assure you that these assets that serve San Antonio, and this is the way we manage, I will assure you that every bit of capacity needed for San Antonio goes here first. Only when we have excess capacity do we push it, and if we need capacity, we'll go out and buy it. But we did not in any way take capacity from San Antonio when it was needed and send it out to the ERCOT market, to other participants, to make money. What happens in an outage, we shut the entire, we shut a portion, excuse me, a portion of the demand down, and everybody had one level of experience or another, many people had multiple days of outage. That was power not consumed, and that was power not produced. It was not sent somewhere else. The other thing I want to share is the ERCOT grid is designed to make sure that we always have more capacity than we have demand. When we have more demand than we have capacity, that's when we can cause a system failure. Any system failure anywhere on the grid can actually trigger a potential outage around the entire grid. And so you potentially get into these rolling blackout concepts that in this case turned into not rolling, but it was coming so fast at us, we had to have long-term blackouts in certain homes. But our goal was to try to prevent a blackout across the entire state. If there's a blackout across the state, we would not be up today. And that's what we were trying to do to make sure that it worked. But ultimately, any out of balance where the demand, because it was so cold, is exceeding the supply, that is what we're trying to prevent from happening, just the technical aspect of explaining that. And that's something that all operators, ERCOT, work together to try to prevent. Going on to Slide 9. Slide 9 shows the nation, and there's degree of very cold temperature, but once again, what was really unusual about this event, it lasted more days than what we had seen in the past. For us, for Texas, for South Texas and Texas, it was unprecedented. And when that system covered the entire state, it was hard to get power from anyone consistently for all the demand, and that's why power had to be reduced. On Slide 11, again, you can see that we were looking at 30,000 megawatts of generation forced offline. And this is not an editorial comment. There were problems with fossil fuel plants, there were problems with the supply of gas, there was no technology that didn't have an issue, and there were problems with renewables. Now, quite frankly, renewables are known, particularly solar, won't produce in the winter. It just won't, and it just can't, particularly when there's a storm, cloud cover, and other issues associated with it. So we don't, and ERCOT does not, and no generator assumes that you're going to run the city or the state with solely solar. It's not a knock on solar. We didn't expect it, and it produced some at certain times, but it definitely can't produce during the peak. So in the winter, you're getting a peak in the morning, and that is very stressful, and you're not getting the most... And you're not getting the most optimum level of sun at that time. And then winds, you're going to get more. We did see wind ultimately come through. But you also had more freezing in the storm than we had before. It's not a knock. Again, it's the issue that every technology has a benefit, and every technology is going to have a challenge. Wind's going to produce better at night in the summer, and solar, of course, is going to produce better in the summertime. But I would say, again, the gas supply issue was a problem for our natural gas units. Huge problem for us, causing both some constraints on reliability and ultimately now some real issues on affordability. And then coal performed, but we had issues with equipment failure. We had an equipment failure at a nuclear plant. We had challenges trying to manage a thermostat. What was a point in our demand response and step program, you really couldn't manage that when, in fact, it was so cold. So the coal temperatures, again, had and wreaked havoc more than we've ever seen before on every single way that we produce power. From this slide to the left, excuse me, 12. We absolutely accept the, the point that we need to improve our communication systems. And as a utility company, I don't believe that we have enough data of outreach and mechanisms to reach every single customer. And we will take that on to figure out how can we do better and really make sure that we have emergency ways to reach out to every single customer. We did, though, when you look at the chart, we did do six news releases, 33 interviews, five media briefings, 37 social media posts. We actually used our voicemail system. We used Nextdoor and we used Facebook. That said, it's got to be more, and we get it. And we've got to do better, and we're going to look to improve that system. So communication was absolutely key, and it will be key on something that we have substantially improved going forward. On slide 13, it's just another view, again, that we were looking at what we can do. We could, we were looking at how we can help residential customers, small business, and large commercial customers. And the comment earlier about the downtown system not being in conservation mode, including ours, we were so focused on trying to figure out how we can help get the system back up again and work with ERCOT and try to figure out how to spread and make the outages work, we weren't focused on our own perspective, and that was not good. It was bad. And once we really took a moment to look at it, we shut our systems down on every single floor to emergency lighting and then kept our employees at home that worked from the office, kept our employees off the road to make them safe. And moving forward, though, that's a huge opportunity. In my mind, upfront, we're going to need to, as a community, come up with some type of system that takes the whole city into a, an alert process and automatically requires all customers, particularly businesses and large institutions, to look for those opportunities to reduce unnecessary lighting at night and those consumption abilities so we can help residents at home. I will say, we did have quite a few customers step up and do some major efforts, but it wasn't enough. Those that did it, they shut down production lines, they changed staffing, they, you know, lowered their, their need to actually have people come in the office. So there were businesses that came through, but we have to be a lot more in concert with each other, aligned, and get it consistent again so we can help residents. So I'm going on to slide 14. So I think our huge pathways, in addition to many others on our list, are to improve our communication systems and to promote conservation more and more and more. It is important that people are conserving all the time. And even in the summer, we're going to reach stress levels again. And we have a conservation program that people participate in, but we've got to be thinking about conservation all year long. And now we know across the board that conservation in the winter is just as important, if not more important, than the summer. It's always important. So we're going to continue to enhance those programs and work with our city leaders and our state leaders and industry to make sure that we're all focused on the same thing. Slide 15 is something that you've seen before. It's just a list of all our portfolio of generation. It focuses on the baseload aspects. We do have a major strategy out there, looking at the Flexible Path Resource Plan that we put out this month, in that we do believe that as part of this whole conversation, we do need to talk about how do we make other decisions in the future? And then very much think about instances like this to enhance our decision. What do we move forward with? How do we prioritize? I will say, there is a cost to every single thing that we do, including energy efficiency and conservation. We've been asked to increase that, that program multiple times. That's a price that every single person pays. And so depending on what we prioritize, reliability, environment, those kind of things, it will highlight where we can put the dollars to be most effective. But we're going to ask for and search for and request continued input about how to make strategic decisions that also protect us from these type of situations in the future. Slide 16 shows kind of the, the whole portfolio, including energy efficiency and conservation, the things that we're doing with solar. Again, we are number one in solar in the state of Texas. The city of San Antonio has done a fine job in promoting the increased use of utility scale and distributed solar. And from a, from a wind perspective, we've been number two for years. So we have put a lot of resources into those, in those types of technologies. We still believe that we need to continue to invest and keep our portfolio diversified. I will move on to slide 17, and I'm about halfway done, but I'll try to be as swift as possible. This is a depiction of kind of what we experienced. I will say that the, that the storm moved in. We knew it was going to be cold. What we didn't know is that the compounding effect of day after day of being potentially in single digits for the windshield was going to drive that level of coldness across the state. And so what happened is, we started getting, excuse me, we started getting notices from ERCOT very rapidly. And unfortunately, the coldest part of the winter is typically at night. And we were getting those notices, you know, after 12 a.m. and frequently all the way through. So when readers are able to look at it again, they'll see how fast this escalated for us. Now, this is, again, something that we've got to focus on. The issue is, the grid is pushing power all the time. And there isn't one bit, one perspective that a operator or a city can see exactly what's happening in the out of balance situation. So ERCOT can see everything, and then they give instructions to everybody, particularly in terms of what we call shedding load or reducing load. And that means we're starting our outage process. We did enter the process in hoping that, and we've been able to use it before, that the outages would only last 10 to 15 minutes in an hour and that we would cycle that through multiple times. That generally worked when we were in 2011. So we started at that level. But when the targets kept increasing, it became impossible for us to rotate. The other point that many people have asked is why could, why is it that on one side of the street, the lights are on, and other sides of the street, the lights are not on? And from that standpoint, again, we only have mass circuits to currently manage. And we're going to, we're going to look at that. What else could we do with the AMI system or some other technology to help us better isolate outages and really not have such implications because the grouping of customers is so big? And I'll hit it again later in a few slides. When, so going on to slide 18, I think that gives a little bit better aspect of what we experienced. So, so back in 1989, the whole system target to shed load and take off and create outages was 500 megawatts. Back in 2003, it was 1,550 total megawatts for the whole state. In 2006, it was 1,000 megawatts for the whole state. In 2011, it was 4,000 maximum megawatts for the whole state. But this time, it was 20,000 megawatts, five times anything we had seen in the past. So, so again, it, it was something that really happened quickly as well. It didn't have a lot of forecast of the intensity of it and the speed of it. Again, not excuses, information, and we're going to have to figure out ways to try to address how fast these environmental conditions moved on us this last time. And on slide 19, I want to talk again about, again, why was it that some people were on and some people were off? The, the city has grown organically. And so we move forward, you know, overall to, to adapt to wherever that is. And when someone's connected to a circuit, that's not anything that, that anybody would really think about. We're just trying to make sure that under normal conditions, all the circuitry is balanced. Now, I would, I would also say from 2011, the other thing that Texas experienced and San Antonio experienced was tremendous growth. So we had a lot of people move on to circuits. And again, some are really big and some are really small. You could be in the same neighborhood, across the street from us, and be on two different circuits. There, there, we have categorized circuits today in terms of safety and security. So if a, if a circuit is tied to a hospital, is tied to the security of the system so that the police and fire can function, the 911 system, critical infrastructure from that standpoint, those, those circuits primarily stayed on. And the downtown system is a vault system. It's not really even a circuit. And so the downtown system is more of a second group that's called high-frequency systems. And we have about a third that are, that are critical circuits, like hospitals. And then we have a third of those system that's designed to maintain the frequency. And the reason why, you can do some movement inside of the high-frequency, but not a lot. If we take all of those down to rotate, we can cause instability of San Antonio and then cause instability across the grid. That's what left us with one-third of the customers that, that experienced the brunt of the storm. That is no different than the way we approached the storms in 1989, 2003, 2006, and 2011. However, again, because we went five times the capacity target across the system, that's when we got to the point where we couldn't move it to anywhere without taking down hospitals, having an issue where the coronavirus vaccines could be, could be spoiled. Not, these were horrible decisions to make and very difficult from that standpoint. But we were really trying to get the grid back up and get everybody on. We used a program at first to help figure out how to rotate. And eventually, it was so fast and so often, it was causing issues. As noted earlier, people were getting phone calls that the system was trying to start and was blinking and would never start. We had to cut that system off. We basically went back and used the same logic. We weren't automated, we were using the same logic. And we were trying our best towards the end, Wednesday in particular, to try to get some people, as many people as we could get, get back on with intervals about three to five hours of being on and three to five hours of being off. And so that's what happened. But of course, it has to be improved. We will be looking at and are currently looking at, what could we do from the technology standpoint? The AMI system is a potential opportunity that we have looked at. But AMI is not currently structured to be that type of system. In certain cases, the communication line between, between the meter and the source of where it comes into the distribution system is so long, it won't really work for us to use it as it's configured today. But of course, we will look for ways to improve that. And we think that there is some opportunity to do something more by using the AMI system. And we're currently already on that. Going on to slide 20. So, so once again, even the natural gas system, though, was strained. And what happened is, normally, we have mild winters. And so pricing doesn't usually pop up that much for natural gas per unit pricing. But what we noticed quickly, and I started talking about on Monday to the community in the press conferences, is we've seen tremendous increases in the price of natural gas. So the initial, my initial view was about 6,000 to 7,000 percent increase, then about 10,000 percent increase, and then 16,000 percent increase in the price of something. That's like going to the grocery store and ultimately buying a motorcycle when you're trying to buy milk. I mean, that's, that's the type of increases that we saw. Now, if we had not made those commitments to get that natural gas in, it would have been worse. And we wouldn't have been able to keep the system up. And the power wouldn't have flowed in the natural gas system. And it wouldn't have flowed in terms of us being able to get a good portion of the generating units up and keep them up. Every, but this wasn't San Antonio. This was every utility in Texas was doing what it could to get natural gas out of the system. The freeze, though, hurt the natural gas system. In certain cases, it froze the wellheads, or it caused damage and equipment failure at the pumps. Or it was a vicious cycle. Couldn't get electricity to the processing plant. So you couldn't get, you couldn't get the natural gas out of, into the system. And then there were issues where pipelines in the natural gas system froze. And so all of that constraint and reduced supply and all of the extra demand across the state caused those prices to increase. We don't have all the data in on all of the invoices. We made some commitments. In some cases, the gas never showed up. And so we don't have, we are not paying for it and don't have to and will not pay for any gas committed to be delivered that was not delivered. But that also was happening across the state. I will say, I'm moving on to slide 21. There were a lot of questions about, you know, no weatherization efforts. We did conduct weatherization efforts that were, that came from the 2011 event. We did things like focusing on narrow, small, narrow pipes typically have problems in the freezing winter. So we went to go protect those, to wrap them, to insulate them, to put a warming coil around the pipes and then insulate them. We also did visual inspections, but even still, it was tremendous. We saw pipes that, for water and other secondary systems, that they were big enough not to freeze, like eight inch in diameter. Those typically don't freeze. In this case, they did freeze. So I think we have a huge learning lesson in San Antonio and across the state about what more we need to do. Our technology, though, wasn't designed to be in, in close to zero or negative temperatures at all. And so we, we are trying our best to think about the things that need to happen in the winter. We put those efforts out there, but more is needed. And so I'll look again, just will try to move through this very fast. Again, no technology was perfect. There was a unit in some category all the way across where there was a problem. Overall, I think we had, we had more power produced from our natural gas-fired plants. They were able to function when they were up around the clock. They're more efficient than coal. They have lower emissions than, than coal. And typically, the gas price is affordable, even in, in normal winters. But again, in this case, because we had all the problems with supply, freezing lines, freezing wellheads, those kind of things, and in the winter, when we don't normally have that level of demand that we would normally have in the summer, we ended up with some plants that we had issues on the, on the combined cycle plant. On slide 23, we had some gas stenuses. These are the oldest in our portfolio now, and they're in, reaching end of life. Most of them performed. One of them was in a planned outage. But we also had, again, some equipment failure because we had freezing equipment. And so again, we're going to go back and analyze why we weren't able in our weatherization to keep some of those plants from going down. We did end up having to reduce the output in some cases because, again, there wasn't enough gas flowing into San Antonio. And the coal systems, we had a problem with one of our coal systems. It was a technical issue related to a freezing aspect of, associated with the scrubbers and the environmental enhancements. We couldn't really get that going. And that's why we did push some gas into the unit. We were trying to get any bit of continuous around the clock generation that we can do. But again, we had equipment failure in one unit. One unit, Spruce Two, did operate very well. Spruce One, we had some issues with. The nuclear resource, we also had some freezing down there. Overall, it was a smaller line. And again, it was, they did a lot of inspections to make sure that it was ready. But again, we're going to have to go back and look at what more do we need to improve? more do we need to improve in our weatherization efforts, and why did that particular plant, and I think that was one of the- one of the units, uh, we had a problem. Batteries was a problem, and when you're having a- an event like this for weather, you can't take energy away from residents to fire up battery systems. It's just a protocol issue, and it probably isn't a bad rule in terms where we're trying to use, uh, systems that are working twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. The more batteries we get going and the more that we diversify the portfolio, I know that'll get better, but once we discharge our battery systems, that was it. They weren't available to be used anymore. Um, the- again, the SEP program, I mentioned it earlier, I'm on slide twenty-seven. We couldn't- there was no point in trying to- to totally prevent the outage with the SEP program, but- but as mentioned by one of the speakers, it was helpful that we can, as we were bringing the system up, to ping the thermostats to- to help remind people, if you can continue to create conservation during the whole- the whole event, the more that we can spread the power and- and stabilize the- the system. Ultimately, we came out of the managed, um, outages on the- in the Friday timeframe, but that was very helpful, because by that time, we had better performance of conservation across the system, and there was- and we were starting to see some relief of warming temperatures coming around the corner. Um, the solar resources, we talked about that earlier, they're not supposed to- to, uh, perform well in the winter. We got some out of them, but not a lot. And again, even if we had them and we spent more time on the solar resources, it wouldn't have been that effective, because they're just not designed to produce a lot in the winter. And then, we talked earlier on slide thirty- twenty-nine about the wind turbines. They- some of them did freeze, and that's not something that just happened this time. They- they- every once in a while, they freeze. Again, we did see wind producers try to de-ice those, um, those units and- and get more of them back online. There was no- there was nothing that people weren't doing to try to get them to go. Um, you know, this section, and I'm close to the end, the point is, no particular- no particular, uh, technology was perfect. These are very complicated systems. Again, they bring their benefits and they bring their challenges. As your energy experts, that- from- from your community that serves you, we're going to keep working on bundling our technology to make them work well. Um, I'm close to the end, I'm on slide thirty. Um, so again, we're going to continue to look at, um, what happened. This issue, even though we had specific issues happen in San Antonio, they happened across the state. So, no matter what leadership team or where we were, the weather was a huge driver and an experience that happened that was highly unusual. When that system covered the whole state, we were all working to try to keep that power grid up, but it was very unusual in terms of Texas isn't normally impacted like that. We do have a system where we move to, uh, a nodal design, again, and that we have an energy capacity market, an energy market instead of capacity market. I think there's lots of things that we will be talking about with- with ERCOT and other participants in- in ERCOT about what can we do to change the design of the system to make it more able to handle the continued investment into reliability and resiliency. And we have had low prices. I know nobody wants to hear about that, but it's a matter of, though, of us working in concert with our city, state officials to think about with our customers, what do we really want to invest in in terms of creating, um, you know, no experience like this in the future? And- and there's going to be- I'm not talking about the energy prices for natural gas, I'm just saying in general, what can we do to invest in the infrastructure to make sure we're all better protected and the most vulnerable of us are protected? Um, we're going to continue to, again, create outreach and share information and drive towards those improvement aspects. I do want to assure, you know, everyone that we used every tool in our toolbox that we had. The outcomes were, in many cases, horrific. We do understand the importance of us doing better and moving forward, and we do understand that nobody wants to go through this experience again. So, this will ma- remain top of mind as we move forward. I do have a couple of, um, special, um, topics that I want to create, just five-minute updates on in each case. I would like Chris Yukester to come on and talk, he's our COO, and talk about the challenges that we have with the water system. The water system, I- I will intro him, but there are- there are water pumps all over San Antonio. If there was a water pump identified as critical, then it didn't go off. More than likely, if it was in the high-frequency, it got protected, but we did hit one that caused some problems. But if it wasn't in one of those other- other aspects, then it got experienced an outage, just like everything else that we had. And so, again, we need to look at ways to prevent that in the future. You need water to produce energy, and you need energy to produce water. So, Chris, are you ready to add some additional context about what we tried to do, uh, working with SaaS in- in the process?
Yeah, no, absolutely. First, let me just set the context. Uh, you know, the amount of load shed or outages that ERCOT required of us, and it was about a third of our load and- at peak was four hundred thousand customers, and that requirement was of utilities across Texas, not only impacted, uh, you know, end customers, but it also impacted, uh, the water system. SaaS has got about eighty pump stations and a hundred and fifty-eight lift stations across our city, um, and many of- many of those were impacted. I think we've got over five hundred accounts, uh, from SaaS. And to Paula's point, water and energy are very mixed, and so, uh, we were actually having low water pressure, uh, into one of our gas plants, and, uh, it was- it was potentially going to, uh, lead to a derate or a trip on that plant, and I called Steve Klaus, the COO there, uh, they jumped on it and, uh, and they got that pressure back up, and we were able to keep that plant at full capacity, uh, there, uh, there. So, yeah, thank you to SaaS. So, CPS Energy and SaaS were working actively on all sorts of issues through this, uh, through this, uh, event, uh, last week. Um, there- there is, uh, our t- but there is just this need to completely rethink, uh, resiliency. Um, you know, everything from backup generation to- to these pumps, to the- the concept of using AMI, which are digital meters, which allow us to load control at the- at the meter, uh, so that we can bring all of our circuits into, uh, rolling outages and not have to have, you know, a subset of our circuits that have a critical load, but we can bring all of our circuits into the- into a rolling outage and, uh, and basically, uh, isolate those critical circuits or those critical facilities at the- at the meter level. So, again, to Paula's point, there's a lot more work and opportunity that we need to go through to, uh, make our system more resilient, uh, but we're committed to doing that. And back over to you, Paula.
Well, thanks again, um, Chris. I- I just want to highlight again, I think resiliency is definitely something that CPS Energy has to think about in terms of keeping its plants up. We want to and will be reaching out even more. We've started some certain discussions before this with, um, SaaS and other businesses about creating backup systems that they can invest in and that we can invest in. Again, the ability for us to do that would be helpful. There were customers that did have backup systems. I will say that the duration lasted so long that in some cases, the backup systems, uh, didn't have fuel to keep them going through the entire event. So, I think everyone's going to have to rethink, how can we look at these resilience issues? But we do understand, again, the importance of the question between water and energy, and we will spend and are committed to spending more time with- with SaaS leaders to think about what we can do that, again, prevent any of these implications that we experienced this time, prevent them from happening in the future. I will, um, I do want, uh, Rudy Garza, our head of, uh, customer engagement and success, to come and talk a little bit more about some of the comments associated with and the interest of learning more about, you know, why are we where we are in terms of holding bills and trying to get a handle on this fuel component? I do recognize, uh, and we've received comments from the media in the past, that- that many people would like to see the details that are out there, but I also recognize that customers want us to look at the individuals- individuals that were impacted the most to see what we can do in- in- in terms of, uh, reducing that burden that they experience, both physically in- in terms of not getting energy, and then ultimately, the financial aspect of that. So, we still continue to, um, really, really ask for continued patience. We- we are just trying to get a better strategy, so we're not making customers try to problem-solve on their own. We need to try to clear the way first. So, Rudy, I know you want to talk about that a little bit and this whole question about, um, other- other things that we've got.
Mr. Wee?
Yes, sir.
Hey, this is Dr. Mackey. I know we- we- we covering some stuff, and we plan on having a meeting either probably Monday. Is there any way we can cover this Monday and get- get to some voting, uh?
Yes, sir.
Listen to this?
Absolutely.
The discussion is something that we really need to take a little time out with and go over Monday and let Rudy present that Monday, so we'll-
Yes.
-take some time out for that right there on Monday, if you don't mind.
Well, I will stop here then.
Yeah, if you- if you- if you would, and then we could move to, uh, to the next, uh-
Dr. Mackey.
If the board doesn't mind, uh, we will suspend the rules and waive, uh, number six for additional updates-
Dr. Mackey.
-and move on to the operation procurement item, uh, number seven, uh, overhead electric, that's a discussion and possible vote, uh, and we need to hear about the cold weather natural gas impact and the overhead electric distribution service, uh, and we could move on those items right there. If the board doesn't mind, we could suspend the rules and move- move on that to number seven.
Dr. Mackey, can you hear me? This is John Steen.
Yes, sir.
So, I've got something I want to say, uh, at this first meeting, uh, that- that we're- that we're having after this, uh, this event. It- it would take about five minutes. Uh, may I- may I proceed?
Uh, this is following up with, uh, Paul Gold Williams', uh, report.
Yes, it is.
Sure, thank you.
All right, I- I- first, I want to, uh, to address our customers in the community at large and acknowledge the challenges and privations you've been through and the suffering you've endured. And, uh, my wife and I lost power and water in our home for days. Uh, we were okay, but so many of our fellow citizens had a really, really tough and, in some instances, tragic time of it, and that's regrettable and unacceptable. And- and we have to do everything we can to make sure this type of extreme hardship doesn't recur. I also want to acknowledge and thank all of our CPS Energy employees who threw themselves into getting on top of this, uh, from our senior staff constantly monitoring the situation while getting- getting little or no sleep, to our intrepid men and women who brave the elements to address problems in the field. Our CPS Energy team rose to the occasion, and I want to express our gratitude for their diligence, perseverance, and sacrifice. Third, uh, let me reemphasize, this was a weather event of historic proportions. Um, here are a few factoids to highlight the seriousness of this winter storm, which impacted not just us, but the entire state. The ten inches of snow in Midland set an all-time record, easily surpassing the nineteen thirty-one record of two-point-five inches. Uh, Brownsville reported snow for only the third time since eighteen ninety-eight. Austin's six-point-five inches of snowfall was its most in over half a century. And for the first time ever, all two-hundred-and-fifty-four Texas counties were under a winter storm warning. Temperatures in San Antonio was as cold as Anchorage, Alaska. So, it's been characterized as a once-in-every-one-hundred-and-twenty-years winter storm. And thank God, uh, the Texas grid didn't fail. According to ERCOT CEO, we were at times minutes and seconds away from a calamitous collapse of the entire grid. Unimaginably, such a total collapse could have taken over the entire grid for weeks- could have taken out the entire grid for weeks or even months. So, our collective willingness to endure outages prevented this from happening. Having made the above points, I believe we need to thoroughly understand what happened. So, I'm proposing that we undertake an independent full review of CPS Energy's response to this winter storm in terms of preparedness, communication, and disaster management. How did management react to this situation? What are the things that were done right? Were there things that were done wrong? I believe our community demands and deserves such an independent review, so that if another similar situation should occur, we can be sure that we've learned from the past. Finally, we need to understand the full financial impact of this winter- winter storm. As we've heard today, as this crisis unfolded, the price of natural gas and other power-generated fuels spiked into the stratosphere, and CPS Energy is being charged exorbitant amounts of money to pay for this fuel. As soon as we have the figure on the cost of dealing with this event, we should release this information and be ready with a plan on how we're going to deal with this situation. So, Dr. Mackey, that's- that- that concludes what I wanted to say, and I would like to request that- that this independent review be put on the agenda for our next meeting for discussion and a possible vote. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Steen. If we have any other board members who'd like to make a comment or suggestion? Any other board member? Uh, I too would like to, uh, apologize to our citizens for our inadequate job protecting our people in San Antonio. I know we're not perfect, but we were not prepared for this storm. We have to make sense of the generation, make sure of generation producing at a high level. We- we were- we were just not ready, and- and all I could do is apologize to this community. We endured a massive, prolonged, and unprecedented weather event, but it caused, like my fellow board member, it causes all of us to reflect on what it ha- what has happened and look at ways to study and make sure that this will not happen in the future. I too would like an independent audit of- of these things as the fellow board member, but I would like to- to get a report of what happened in two thousand and eleven, um, from the North Americans, and to get a report on what management said about winterizing our coal, gas, and our plants from two thousand and eleven. And in the- and in the process, what we've done, I like to hear from management first on what they have- what they have done, and then move to the audit, too. So, I would like both of them to be on the agenda for the, uh, next Monday, and if it's all, uh, approved by the rest of the board members, I would like to schedule a board meeting for Monday at one o'clock, uh, next Monday at one o'clock, so we can cover all of these agenda items, these- these agenda items. Uh, first of all, for administration, and then second of all, uh, taking that, uh, from, uh, the fellow board member about what we- what we need is independent auditor. If we could look at those things and they be covered on the, uh, agenda for next week. Any other board member would like to make a comment?
Dr. Mackey, this is, uh, Trustee Kelly.
Yes, sir.
I- I've been listening, obviously, for the last two-plus hours to the comments that people have made, and- and a lot of them are really touching, and- and they do bother me. Uh, and I do, uh, feel sorry for and apologize and empathize with the people that were hurt. I went through the same, uh, problems as everybody else, so we- we were all in this together. But I do want to, from my perspective, uh, qualify to some extent the fact that CPS Energy was not prepared. Um, as far as I can tell, even if we had had, uh, weatherized our system and were fully prepared for this event, what that would have done is just put more energy into the ERCOT system across the state. We would have still been called on from ERCOT to cut our demand, uh, and- and so the effect would have been about the same. This was a statewide problem. It was not a CPS Energy problem. And again, we could have had a perfect system here that was totally winterized and totally online and totally functioning, and we still would have had the same problems, because ERCOT needed our system, needed to- Because ERCOT needed, our system needed to us to reduce demand locally so that they could use those electrons in other parts of the state. So we need to make it clear that if we wanted to have solved this problem, Dallas, Houston, Austin, every other major city in the state and every other major utility in the state would have had to do major modernization and winterization of their plants as well. Because this was not an island. This was not a San Antonio event. So I want to just clear up the, now, obviously there's things we can do better. But I think we're, uh, being a bit tough on our management and on our company by saying we were not prepared. Nobody was prepared. And even if we were totally prepared, we can do a study on that if we want to, but I don't think it would have made much difference at all in terms of the outage, because you had to have this electricity to go across the state. And you, you saw what happened in Houston and in Dallas, which was in many instances much, much worse than us. And they have much higher demand than us. And so we would have, uh, had more electrons to feed to those guys. But we would not have necessarily helped our own case a whole lot. So we need to make that very clear. This was not a CPS Energy problem. This was a state problem. And ERCOT, I, uh, put a lot of the blame on them. But again, ERCOT is nothing more than a, a big broker, if you want to look at it that way. They have to allocate across the state. And their job is to make sure the total system doesn't go down. And so they're in the allocation business. And, and if they had to steal from San Antonio to support Dallas or to support Austin or Houston or someplace else, they were going to do that. And so, uh, let's, let's be honest about it. This was not a local issue. This was a statewide issue. And as Trustee, uh, Steen pointed out a few minutes ago, this was of epic proportions. There have never been, probably in the history of this state, anything close to the catastrophe in weather that we just went through. Now, I know people don't like to hear that because it's great to have a scapegoat and to jump all over Paula and to jump all over CPS Energy. That's convenient, but it's not necessarily true. And so we need to be very careful about that.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other board member would like to make a comment?
Chairman, uh, this is Ron. Yeah, I'd like to make a, a statement. Hello?
Yes, please. Continue.
Okay. The past week of winter weather and the impact on our residents, uh, clearly has led to frustrations, calls for, uh, questions, calls for accountability and ongoing concerns about our city's resilience and our preparedness. That should be expected. While many of the factors that triggered the devastating impacts and the electrical and water outages in our community that our, our citizens still suffer from, were not all within our control. It certainly is our duty to report to the community how our public utilities, how our community got in this situation and what we can do to be better prepared for the future. As mayor of the city, I will be tasking an independent review of the entire preparedness, communications and response of the last week and the events leading up to it and what we can be better prepared to give the citizens of our community the answers that they deserve and also ensure that we never find ourselves in this situation again.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other board member would like to say anything? If not, I would like, appreciate if we could waive number six and that's in the report.
Wait, Dr. Mackey? Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, this is Trustee Gonzalez. Um, again, many of my colleagues expressed, we use the word echo a lot, but again, my sincere apology. And again, this is not acceptable. I think the hardest thing for me, one as a mother, a small business owner and as someone who's been involved in the community at a very young age, to be a change agent. I think the hardest thing to accept is the pandemic highlighted the systemic problems in San Antonio of inequality and access to, unequal access to quality of life. And then this event just again reinforced that. And so I guess I do welcome, you know, the assessments, call it an assessment, needs analysis and audit. I welcome that. And I just would like to just conclude that at the end of the day, when we ask tougher questions in this meeting and post this meeting, one, that the next meeting take place not at one o'clock, but in the evening. Um, again, that we open the lines for people engagement and participation. And then the third thing that I would like to add is that I, I really want to know a little bit more about our decision-making process once the crisis hit. I, I still think that, you know, it's still a little unclear. Um, I think that we owe that to our public that we serve. And then I too want to ensure that this never happens again. We're safe with the new reality to make power more reliable, secure and safe while also recognizing the environmental and economic, uh, costs and crisis that we may face, not just today, but for a very, very long time. And we need to be, again, increased operational transparency, effective communication, collaboration. And this is not going to be easy. But those of you who are out there who know me know that I am committed uh, to continue to listen, to meet with you at any time that you're available and to use a public process to do so. That concludes my comments.
Uh, thank you. Um, Mr., if we move on to, uh, number seven, uh, procurement item, Mr. Paul Barnum? Hello? Hello?
I think he's trying to answer.
Hello, Mr. Barnum?
Sir, can we go on to, uh, to, uh, item number eight? Um, Frank may answer, uh, in the interest of time. Frank may also be able to answer some of the questions. We were just trying to punctuate this procurement and we can also bring it back if there's anything we missed. Can we move on and Frank, are you re- available?
Yes, ma'am. Ready to go.
Yes, Frank, go ahead and continue with procurement, uh, review.
Okay, well, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to be here today. This is, um, a review of the procurement items that you'll find on your, uh, consent agenda today. And I'll, uh, I understand, uh, that we need to move, uh, quickly. So I will attempt to do that and be ready to answer, uh, any questions that you have. Uh, so, um, this section starts on, on page forty-one, uh, of your printed materials or of your, uh, of the PDF. Um, and so the objective here is to discuss how we procure our goods and services and highlight our progress in the recruitment of local and diverse companies. Um, it's an opportune moment to just take a pause and do that for a second. And to provide an overview of the procurement that you'll find, as I said, on the consent agenda. And, uh, the, the following slide supports that objective statement. So moving to slide forty-four. Um, it's a big, it's, it's a big company that we have here, an asset of the communities. Um, we deliver power and gas and we procure goods and services of all kinds to support that delivery, uh, to our community. We, we have a procurement policy that was adopted by the board, uh, in two thousand and two and then subsequently had a significant revision in, in two thousand and seventeen. And that's, uh, the set of, uh, rules that we operate, uh, that we operate by. And within those rules, one of the things that has been brought front and center, uh, over the last few years in a place where I personally and my team and under Paula's leadership and with the, uh, at the urging and insistence of our, of our board is, um, the work that we've done to recruit and, uh, help develop small women, minority and veteran-owned businesses in our community. Uh, a slide, uh, the next slide is one that doesn't need any explanation, but obviously, uh, we operate against our guiding pillars. And from a procurement standpoint, it really is all of them that we are supporting with our, with our efforts. On the following slide, these are the two biggest categories of procurements. On the left-hand side, you'll see RFQ, which is a request for qualification, and that's for professional services. Some of those are, um, land surveyors. In fact, we have, one of the procurements is a land surveyor. Architects, engineers, attorneys, uh, and there is a statutory requirement, and I won't read you the government code section here, but it, it, um, governs how we procure services and, and of that, of that type, these professional services. And so we operate against the statute, statutory requirement for those. On the right-hand side is one of the other, of, of the two really big categories, and that's RFPs or requests for proposal. And the policy that I mentioned, uh, on the previous slides will govern those. And it, for those, a, a really important distinction here is that on the RFQs, as we previously described, um, we have to follow a strict set of statutory requirements that do not permit us to, um, consider the, uh, status of, of a, of a firm's small, uh, minority women veteran-owned business or locally owned business. And so we, we'll get a little bit more on that in just a second. But for RFPs, we, we can take those and other considerations into, uh, consideration and, and, and we do. The following slide is a list of the procurements that are on your consent agenda. I'll just note that there are, the majority of these are RFPs. Items number five and six are RFQs. And, uh, we'll, we'll have more detail on the following pages about them. But first, just speaking here about the way that we go about making procurements and how we operate as a gas and electric utility to almost one million customers. Um, as I said, there are things that we, we do that are highly specialized and, and purchases that we make that require specialized capability or capital-intensive production or supply chains that, or investments in a, in a, on a supplier's behalf to be able to participate. And because we know that there's some of those, we, we realize that we have to take a, a real intentional approach to making sure that we are, um, making available to our small women, minority and veteran-owned businesses, um, the opportunities that, you know, all of the opportunities that we can and, and seek to recruit those firms to make sure that we have a great, a, a, a big, a large and growing pool from which to solicit and engage. So we, we do that. And we also, at, at the urging of our board and, uh, in discussions with our community stakeholders, we have successfully found opportunities to debundle. And, um, so that continues to be an, an important strategy for us. And, and finally, um, subcontracting plans and vendor mentorship is something that in every, in every instance where we are able, we consider those and want to push our, uh, the vendors with whom we're going to do business to make sure that they have top of mind how they're going to, uh, um, subcontract and, and mentor businesses that, uh, along with them. I, I should, I should have mentioned that we, we do have active relationships with several, uh, different partner agencies. Among, among them would be the Fair Contracting Coalition, the South Central Texas Regional Certification Agency, the NAACP, the Hispanic Contractors Association and the Southwest Minority Supplier Development Council, uh, to name some. And we, you know, continue to seek opportunities to grow and, and nurture those relationships so that we can grow our pool of qualified candidates. On the next slide, you'll see two, two charts. On the left is, um, small business registrations and on the right is minority business registrations. Going back to the left, you can see that from in the year, um, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we, we doubled our registrations, which we, you know, it happened in a year of COVID and technological limitations, uh, for outreach. But, um, nonetheless, we're, we had a successful year on that front. And then on the minority business registration front, we, we were able to triple the number of, um, registrations that we had in the prior year. Also, we think a good, a good story and we, our, our goal is to maintain that momentum as we move into, into this year. So on the following slide, um, I'll just orient you to this table briefly. It is the same one, items one through seven that I showed you on the previous table. Um, and you, you can see the value of each of those items. You can also see the percent small women, minority veteran-owned. That's the SWMV column and then the local. What I would say is, um, of the hundred and seventy million dollars that we are, um, putting forward on the consent agenda today, forty-four million dollars were awarded to, uh, SWMV-owned businesses and a hundred and thirty-five million were awarded locally. So, um, we, we think that that is, uh, are, are good results. And those are for prime contractors and we are still working with those individuals to make sure that we can maximize subcontracting opportunities as well. On the following slide is item number one. It, it, this is for, um, engineering construction services for, um, our electronic recloser deployment. It's twenty-five million dollars over four years. It's, uh, it's also connected to item number two, which I'll talk about in just a second. Uh, and I also, I will describe the function of the recloser in just a second on the next page. This is for the services, um, or the engineering construction related to the deployment. Um, six hundred and twenty-three distribution circuits. We have the, six hundred and eight reclosers installed thus far. And we have a plan to deploy the, uh, recloser system-wide. We'll explain why, I'll explain just in a second, uh, why that's important on the next page. So item number two, which is on the next page, is the, 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 the equipment itself, the electronic reclosers themselves that would be associated with that, uh, item on the prior page. And this is twenty million dollars over four years. These are, um, automat- automatic high voltage electric switches which reduce the need to send crews out to investigate and restore power. It's, they, they shut off when, when there's trouble detected on the circuit and then attempt to reclose, um, the circuit when, uh, when there's no more trouble any longer, when the trouble is no longer present. And, and in the event that trouble is removed and there's no trouble any longer, then the, um, recloser is able to close the circuit remotely and automatically and therefore get our customers back on, uh, faster. Uh, on the next slide is item number three. This is for overhead electric. This is the item that Mr. Paul Barham was going to speak about. Um, seventy-one million dollars over three years. It's, um, to supplement our internal overhead electric distribution, uh, capability. It's for line extensions, subdivision work, pole replacement and really importantly, storm restoration. So, uh, one of the, well, the reason that Mr. Barham was going to speak a little while ago was to note that we sought and were approved a, a compelling business reason, uh, a use of our compelling business reason process wherein with the anticipation of the extreme weather coming and getting very, very close to the end of our previous overhead electric distribution contract, uh, as, as part of our extensive winter, uh, event preparations a couple of weeks ago. Um, sorry, as a part of our extensive event preparation, of course, the winter prep was done in, uh, October, but it's specific to this event, we looked at, um, important contracts that we would need to be able to be responsive should there be significant failures of, of equipment, lines down and so on in the, in the, in the system. And, and looking at that, we determined that we did not have enough capacity to give us comfort that we, um, would be able to respond effectively to, uh, significant, uh, distribution, uh, lines down or, or failures of equipment. Um, as, as such, we reached out to our board chairman, um, sought and, uh, received, uh, his approval and then as per our policy. as per our policies, notified our other trustees within 24 hours that we had taken this action. And of course, you all, as I explained then, we are here today in part to tell you, you know, to make sure that it's noted here in this meeting that we did in fact use that process. So this is an approval, just the same, and it is for the overhead electric contract distribution services, as I noted. On the following slide is number four, exposing and excavating underground utility services. This is 14 and a quarter million dollars, three years. This is really, really important because these excavation services are, in some cases, allow our contractors to use specialized equipment that excavate around, you know, they dig into the ground in a way that doesn't disturb, doesn't damage nearby utilities. And of course, you know, the damage to a utility line can be catastrophic if someone were to accidentally hit primary electric line in the ground. That could be catastrophic. And just the same, if they were to hit one of our gas mains, that could be dangerous. So it's really important for safety and reliability that we have quality underground excavation. Item number five is land surveying. It is one of the two items that required the use of the RFQ process, four and a half million dollars over three years. And as the name implies, it is, you know, surveying wherein you locate property boundaries for existing right-of-ways and for new ones and create digital maps in our, what's called GIS system. On the next page is item number six, and this is for a drain pond at Spruce Owner Engineering Services. It's $5 million with a work to be completed by December 31, 2024. And it is, this is the engineering and design work, and then there'll be a separate stream of work to actually construct the pond. And it is required to meet the EPA coal combustion residual rule. And finally, item number seven, also a critical requirement here. This is a $30 million contract over three years. It's for conducting locates of our underground electric and gas facilities. Now, a minute ago, I talked about excavation. Well, this is a close cousin in the sense that you have to locate the lines underground in order to properly excavate them. And this is a requirement under the law for us to perform this service for our systems. It uses a Texas 811 system. I think everyone has seen call 811 before you dig, at least I hope you have, up on billboards and so on, at permanent improvement stores. And it is, of course, a requirement, and I hope all that are listening will also just take a moment from a safety standpoint to make sure that you're knowledgeable about that number, 811, and you call it anytime you're going to dig, whether that be for a patio or the irrigation system or, you know, to build a structure. Really important for your safety that you make that phone call, will come out within 48 hours and perform that locate. This contract here is to do that work. We had approximately 200,000 of those last year to serve our community, and a growing community as we are requires additional gas, electric, new homes, broadband internet, and all of that requires locate services to make sure that we're putting in safely. And finally, they conduct third-party damage investigations when that's necessary, when there's been damage to our system. So on the next slide, by way of next step, the consent agenda reflects what I've just described here today, and we will seek your approval today on those operational procurements of these critical goods and services. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Do we have any questions or comments?
I do. I do. Can you hear me? This is Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes, ma'am.
Frank, first of all, thank you to you and your team in improving the minority participation and with a focus on debundling. However, I did notice, if I'm correct, there's procurement forms six and seven, I believe. Let me make sure that's correct. Where I think AECOM states there's no commitment. They say they may pursue opportunities. My question is, why are we allowing that? And I believe it's the same for seven. So the purchase order, I think the item description is for Spruce Plant Drain Pond Owner's Engineering Service. And I believe the other one, which is seven, is for the utility locating and marking. And I believe that one is for CCS enterprise. So that would be my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody else has committed a percentage.
Yes, ma'am. As to those two items, I'll take a start at it, and I don't know if it would be Chris or who has a speaker, a hotline that would be able to speak to it, or the member of the operational team on the locating side. But the, let me start with the locating. This contract, first of all, both of them are open to participation, and we're going to look closely at how to do this together, as you know. As I hope we've conveyed, this is obviously a priority of ours largely because of your sponsorship and because, appreciate that. But you're right, we did not have a commitment at this time. The, as to the locating, the individuals are employed directly by the locating company and go out and perform the service. I don't know, and I think this is a question for Fred or for Mr. Richard Lujan, Mr. Fred Bonneville or Mr. Richard Lujan, as to whether there's, what additional services they're providing under that locate. Do I have either of you able to talk about that?
I don't want to delay the meeting. We have a very, I still have a lot of questions of other issues. I mean, I think anybody, I don't care what kind of primary, there's always something that you can commit to at work share. And these are large amounts for a very long time. So I kind of go back to I sincerely appreciate the efforts to debundle and increase outreach and participation, but these are significant, and more so with the pandemic and the recent crisis. This is again, an opportunity for, whether, you know, again, minority groups to participate.
Well, yes, ma'am. And with the interest in keep, we will certainly continue that, the work that we're doing with looking for ways to.
I guess what I'm saying, and I'm okay with approving the other procurements except these two until we can get a commitment at work share. I know that I'm one of many, but that would just be my stance.
Okay. What are you saying, Ms. Gonzalez now?
What I'm saying is that I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the debundling, except for procurement item, I think it says form seven and six. These are the only ones that don't have a commitment at work share to a subcontractor.
How about six and seven?
Yes.
Okay.
It says there would be an effort, but no commitment. So what I'm saying is that I would support all the other ones that have a commitment, except the ones that don't have a commitment.
Okay. You have to put it in form of a motion.
Okay. I move, I guess to, I guess I move to approve procurement items with the exception of procurement form six and seven.
So you approve, you move to the consent agenda, one, two, three, four, and five?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I mean, it's on song.
Do we have a second?
Dr. Mackey, this is Carolyn. Just to clarify, what, the consent agenda has a number of things on it, and so we, the motion is to approve of the specific procurement items, five of them, and not approve at this time, the Spruce Plant Drain Pond Owner's Engineer Services and the utility located and marketing. Is that right, Trustee Gonzalez?
She wants to approve.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion is approved out of A, B, C, D, one, two, three, four, and five.
Oh, okay.
That wasn't the motion.
Yes, I want to bitch.
Do we have?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Karen. Wait, wait, wait. I think I heard Mr. Steen. Go ahead, Mr. Steen.
Oh, no, no. I thought you were focusing on D, one, two, three, four, five, so.
Okay. Are we, I don't want to confuse the audience. Okay, go ahead.
Approve nine A, nine B, nine C, D one, D two, D three, D four, and D five.
Correct.
Guys, I'm still confused. What is the problem with item six and seven?
If you look at all the procurement efforts, most were, they were debundled, and there's a commitment of minority participation. The only ones that don't have a commitment with clear details is item six and seven.
Ken, this is the CEO. If I could just add, I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, make a comment. I totally support that the board members can pull items. I do want to add a bit of context, though, if I could. And we can definitely bring, bring these items back for more consideration. Typically, on items like these last two, Vice Chair Gonzalez, that, excuse me, that you've highlighted, the challenges that we have in some of these is that they're, remembering that we are the only coal company in the region, you typically aren't going to find another local entity with the expertise to work on that type of issue. Now, to your point, we're always now looking for what can we do in terms of trying to create that type of business. I would say from a perspective of coal is that, you know, kind of on the, what are we going to do within the future? We have problems trying to convince people that that's the business that they need to get in and on the specialization that it is in. So your point is well-taken, and we're continuing to try, but that one in particular is going to be very, very difficult. It's a matter of trying to find enough local people that want to be in that business and have that expertise, and that is not something that we find commonly. And then on item number seven, the locating and marking sounds simple, but as Frank talked about, the 811 requirement is also tied to the Railroad Commission requirement. There is a ton of liability associated with that activity, and most entities won't go after that business or the issue that the general contractor has to take all the liability makes it very difficult. Now that we don't have a commitment from item seven, but we have talked to them, but they're going to have to spend a whole lot more time getting a small company to invest in a significant amount of training and meet their requirements and have to decide if they're going to be the ones to cover the liability of that smaller entity. So there are times, and I think in this case, there are times where it requires a whole lot more effort to do that, and we don't have a bedroom community locally from that standpoint. And as I look at these two, ma'am, I think that's what we have here.
Okay, well, on seven, I can understand. And then I guess I would like a little bit more information on six, but I, after you go in more into detail, I can understand seven.
This is John Steen. Let me ask a question of Ms. Gold Williams. If we, on this consent agenda, we've got, we've got a number of items. If we exclude six or seven and we wait one month, would that create any hardship on the company?
In reality, sir, I think because we're going to come back next week, I think we could, you know, potentially try to answer those questions. So I think within the next week, the 30 days, we can do it. I just didn't want you all not to have that. In some cases, there are other hurdles. So yes, sir, I, without, for the rest of my group, I think it'll be fine.
I mean, if it could be delayed, then it would give, it would give Ms. Gonzalez the opportunity to delve into it more and give her questions answered and that sort of thing.
Yes, sir. We'll try. I just wanted to make sure I provided that context.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback call, and then I appreciate Trustee Steen making that recommendation, and that satisfies, you know, I don't want to delete this further, but that satisfies and provides me the opportunity to ask additional questions for six and seven.
Okay, good. Well, then, so then if the motion is to approve A, B, C, D, one, two, and then D, one, two, three, four, five, and we'll just defer six and seven, then I'll second that motion. And if we defer six or seven for a month or whatever.
Okay. We have a motion to approve nine A, B, one, two, three, four, five.
Excuse me, sir?
Yeah, and we have a second by Mr. Steen. Uh, Ms. Schellman, we, roll call.
Wait, wait, wait. I heard Frank.
Pardon me?
I think I heard Frank try to say something.
My apologies. I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Mackey, I do, I understand the motion. We have a motion and a second, and if the board is ready, I'll go ahead and call the roll for vote on that motion.
Let me ask, let me ask a question on the motion, okay?
Absolutely.
Well, two questions. One, I think I've got one answer, but I want to make sure that we're not constraining our operations people in terms of getting these jobs done with the delay. And I, if I heard you, if I heard the CEO write, this will not hurt us having a delay so that we can study this issue a little bit more or whatever. That's question number one. Question number two, are we going to commit to make sure that this, these two issues are handled at the next meeting? Because I think there's a sense of urgency to get this type of stuff done. I don't think you can let it lay there for an intermittent period of time. So if we can make sure of those two points, that delaying it is not going to cause operational problems for us, and two, that if it doesn't create operational problems, then we're going to move on it quickly so that it won't create operational problems down the line, then I'm okay. But I want to make sure that we're not stopping the train when we don't need to.
I think, sir, because we have a special meeting coming up around the corner, we'll be able to assess those two. If one can wait a month, we'll do that, but if having that next week to try to work with Vice Chair Gonzalez, I think we can manage this process.
Okay. Well, with that caveat, I'm okay.
Is there any other discussion that the board wants to have before we proceed to a vote? If not, I will call the roll. Mr. Steen?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey, the motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Schellman. At this, this time, we'll move to the regular agenda and for committee reports. And I think that Mr. Steen and Mr. Kelly, if you would like for the report to reflect in the records, that unless you would like to read the report.
This is Trustee Kelly. I don't feel I need to read my report. It's in the packet.
And this is John Steen. I feel the same.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steen and Mr. Kelly. The committee report will reflect in the records for the minute. Okay, we, the next item, we have a board committee assignment. Do we have a motion to vote on the board committee assignment?
I move.
Okay. Uh, may I?
I second.
Okay, Mr. Kelly is second. Do we have a roll call, Ms. Schellman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Steen?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey. Dr. Mackey, are you in favor of this?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes unanimously and the assignments are approved.
Hello? Hello?
We can hear you, sir.
Okay, thank you. I know we need to move on to executive session. Is this something, it's time is 5:31. And before we, I say anything, Ms. Schellman? Ms. Schellman, would the board like to do closed session this week or move to next Monday? Because the items are going to be discussed, there's going to be discussion items, we're going to talk about this next Monday in closed session would be fuel purchase and generation planning.
Dr. Mackey, I think that I would leave that up to the CEO to decide whether she is, thinks it's okay to defer those.
In light of the activities and good discussion and good feedback we've gotten today, I think we can defer them and we can reach out to all of you as we get the agenda ready for next week.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If the board agrees, then we can cover this and if it all pops, I know Chair Steen would like three items and things on the next board agenda and we can put this on the next board agenda with some other items. So if we could, if all board members agree, then we can adjourn and have this on the next board agenda next week, next Monday.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. This is John Steen.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? None opposed, then the meeting will be adjourned. Thank you.